My name's Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz. I'd like to welcome you here today to Committee of the Whole, our regularly scheduled monthly meeting that happens at 9:00 AM on the third Tuesday. I generally chair Committee of the Whole to give our esteemed mayor a chance to participate in debate and give him a little break from the onerous task of keeping council in check, which is not actually all that onerous. So I have a few comments to make before we call the meeting to order. Before we begin, I would just like to acknowledge the passing of a former councillor here in Kings County. Former councillor Glenn Jodry passed away yesterday, and so I'd like to just comment that he was a valued member of council, a valued member of our community. I think most around the circle knew his name even now, although it's been several years since he served on council, and it does leave a hole in our community as someone who is very passionate about where he lived, in the Harmony area, and he will be missed. So many condolences go to his family during this difficult time. You'll notice today we have a reduced complement of council, and there are several reasons for that. One councillor is on medical leave, councillor Killam, and three others are in attendance at a conference in Moncton, at the Asset Management Conference. So we do have quorum with six councillors, and I wanted to note, it can be disappointing to prepare a presentation and not have the full complement of council here to receive it. However, we stream our meetings online, they're recorded, you can both listen and watch, if you're so inclined, at a later date, and most councillors who miss meetings do their homework and are able to receive the presentation via video conference. And I assure you, if they have questions of any kind, they know they can reach out to the organisers of the presentations today. So with that, and with our smaller group this morning in front of us, small but capable, I would like to take roll call, so please indicate on your pinpad if you are present. For those new to council, we do record all of our votes on these little voting systems in front of us, they light up, and then we indicate yes or no, here or not here, but if we're here, we usually press here. Okay, the voting is ready. As you'll note, six councillors are present. At this time, I would take a motion to excuse the absences of councillors Allen, Davison, Harding, and Killam. Moved by Mayor Matart, seconded by councillor Meisner. Discussion on the motion to excuse. Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please indicate in the usual fashion. And the wait is 10 seconds is the time between when the voting starts and when the voting ends. It doesn't just appear, once we've all voted, we do wait that 10 seconds. The motion is unanimously passed, thank you, council. Our second item on our agenda this morning is the approval of the agenda. It's been circulated, and I would look to ask council for a motion to approve our agenda. Moved by councillor Hurdle, seconded by Mayor Matart, thank you. Discussion on the agenda. Just before we take the vote, I would note, we do have a presenter indicate they may or may not be able to attend this morning, so we obviously have one presentation in attendance, but we're still waiting to hear if our second presentation is happening. So that's just a note on the agenda. And the second thing I would say is, we do have a special council as well after today's Committee of the Whole meeting, so this is not the only agenda we will be voting on this morning. Hopefully, it's still this morning by the time we get there. The motion has been moved and seconded, no discussion, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Thank you, council, the agenda is approved. At this point, with an approved agenda, I look to see if any councillor wishes to declare a conflict of interest on any of the items listed on our approved agenda. Any conflicts to declare? Seeing none, we'll move to item four, approval of the minutes of our last Committee of the Whole meeting in June, on June 20th, 2023, could I have a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Granger. Discussion on those minutes. Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify now of approving the minutes. Mayor Matart, did you intend to vote in favour of those minutes? Maybe you did. That's okay. Sometimes these things are sensitive, or not sensitive. So we'll consider those, all in favour of approval of the minutes of June 20th, Committee of the Whole. Is there any business arising from those minutes? Okay, no business arising. We'll move to presentations. So the first presentation we have scheduled this morning is Tyra Innes Harvey. Ah, she's here, okay, wonderful.
I was fooled by the interior. I was going around on the video, so I assumed we were still around.
Oh my gosh. Yeah, so come up here, and we'll get you right to this podium here. And if you wish to state your name, and then you may begin. Sorry to throw you into it as soon as you walk in.
Oh, that's me, I should have been more aware where I was going. Good morning. I haven't spoke to council since 1997, I haven't spoken public for a long time, so I'm a wee bit rusty. I am Tyra Innes Harvey, I'm here from North Kentville area. I've probably spoke to a few of you in the past, I'd like to have met others of you on this topic prior to showing up here. I'm here because, essentially, in short, what I would like to do, please, is ask you to allow me to build more than the 25% allotted additions on non-conforming, it's not a non-conforming structure, it's on a non-conforming land, I believe. So what that means is, I'm working with a house that does not have public road frontage, and this particular house does have deeded right-of-way that was fought for and won in Supreme Court, and was registered last summer, even though it was fought for and won about 12 years ago, and it was in place prior to the bylaw changes that took place in November 2011. So these are bylaw changes that took place to the amendment of the bylaws, which made non-conforming lots different than lots that have road frontage. And I'm aware of that because I own most of, if not all of, the Randall Road bed where it lies. In the course of 31 years raising my children there, and acquiring small house and building on it, and acquiring neighboring properties, we now own five properties with houses and two that are vacant lots. And no, I'm not a rich landlord, I have children and family that aren't really doing so well, so they're housed there. I have my mother-in-law living with us, she's currently hospitalized, so I'm kind of fractious with my efforts, and it seems that way, but it's been in my heart for over 30 years to bring all my family there. Things are hard, and it works good for us. So my parents live in North Kentville. My father's ex-military, he brought Michelin here, my mother was in service industry for years, and they have a big home in North Kentville, I'd like to sell it and bring them to the small host that I most recently purchased in 2021. So I purchased this after the bylaw change, and I was made aware by my lawyer that if I was to do something out of the ordinary with it, and the example be run a bed and breakfast or something, that I would need to go through this process. When I applied for the permit to build is when I realised that part of the process would be to build more than 25% of the existing footprint as it sits on the land. I'm only asking for 35%. It's not a giant piece, but the house is small to begin with. Currently, you need to walk through the washroom to get to the bedroom. My mother also has an oversized prescription bed that she has to have, it's eight feet wide, and it takes up the best space of a floor, that's a 12-foot bedroom. So I'm really only asking for 35%. I'm asking to build a piece substantial enough that there would be elbow room to get around and not have to walk through a bathroom to go to bed, and some storage. With that 25%, if you choose to put that on the main level, you don't get to put a basement below it, so you can build a house on a four-foot crawl space, which just doesn't sound like a quality home to build. And I'm not certain why, to begin with, and I don't like to ask why or how come, but something out there has put it necessary to only allow these small additions. So maybe there's a map for the future that has these right-of-ways cleared up, or these prescriptive right-of-ways cleared up, and they really want houses to have full road frontage, I understand that. But I own the road, I gave that property road access in court, I gave two others access in court. When I say "I", I mean my family, and I speak, they really are behind me. They're not here today, but they are, we are we. So there are three properties that have access across the Randall Road besides the county, two of which were purchased, so there's one outstanding family that has the right to use it and to maintain it with me. That was only recorded this summer past. I believe the omission of recording it was to help the community with the feeling that they all want, because they all, there were a lot of people that signed petitions, the petition is made public, I can find out who was in a position to want the road opened, to want to use it, when we closed it many years ago. I can find out who wanted it closed and didn't proceed to court, and didn't pay for lawyers, and didn't proceed with getting it right-of-way. But at the time when this bylaw was passed, it wasn't registered, and it may have still looked like a potential to force right-of-way frontage, something like this, I don't know. But as it stands, I own, we own the property that is adjacent to the hospital, the full length of the Randall Road, from Sanford to Keddie, with five homes that we can only build on four. One of them has frontage on the Randall Road, or sorry, on the Sanford Road, the rest is all privatized. All the land in Keddie and Randall Road beds are owned not by the government, so that's what my glitch is. But the people still want to appreciate it as if it's open to the world, it's not. I'm here simply to say, I'm asking, please, I want to build more than 275 square feet on a house, and the total that I want is the 35, 34% more than the 25. If I build a basement under it, I can only build 12% on the main floor. It's calculated on the footprint, on the land, pardon me, and we may have voted for this, and I may have hung a sign in my own yard in 2019 to say agricultural property. It's not really tied to agricultural, there's no farm where I lived, it never was, I can grow tomatoes, and there's reference to a bird sanctuary or something, a bird collector of pigeons had a small collection of pigeons up there, but it was never a chicken farm. It's not agriculture, it's our too, and in 2019, there was a move to save, drawing up, save some agricultural land by stopping this growth. And it stops us from growing our homes, that I've invested in my children's future, it's what I have to give them, without them proceeding through an array of subdividing and asking neighboring and adjoining people for right-of-ways. I luckily own the right-of-way, and I could give it over gladly, and bylaw people would like me to, the land use people showed a map whereby I can divide what is the Randall Road into three or four segments and give each of my other properties some frontage, but that does nothing to the party that has a right-of-way across it, and it provides us with something like seven-foot wide roads that literally cross over a line that was drawn and cost a lot of money. The line says, anything to the west can be used by now just one party, anything to the other side is ours. The county was, suggests that I, divvy that wrote up and give it to, a little parcel to some of my properties, but it does nothing for my children in the future if they want to establish a three-acre lot up there that could be divided down in its dead space. All of these lands are taxed at the same rate that all of the county lots are taxed at. My rate didn't go down, and I was not informed, and I don't know how many other houses are like that, because I can't get an answer from the county, how many people live in shared driveways that think that they can go tomorrow, or in 10 years, give their homes to their children, and they can build more than 25% of the footprint, regardless of if it exists with a basement, regardless if it's a four-story house. And when I asked for, perhaps as a projection for a map, maybe they think that those small houses in those non-conforming lots would be gone in 2050. The only map that exists, and it's not a map, it's more, it's more back to the original document, the map that exists is the bylaw amendment from 2019 that says, don't build more than 25% of the original footprint. There's really, boils down to almost being penalized for living there, nothing's different than what I do than what everybody else does in the morning, except for we are responsible for clearing our own long driveway, which makes fair sense to me. It's 600 feet long, and we take care of it. In the meantime, I'm here to say, I think it would be very sweet if I could get my mom, see, I started working on this in February, it was an idea we came up at Christmas, we need to get together. And in February, I thought I would design this nice little host addition, and it wasn't huge, I'm not asking for much, but that's when I found out that this is what took place. Other families were never notified, this has never been sent to me in the mail that I now have these parcels of land that are going to have a hard time, and I could, let's go back to what the offer was, get road frontage, so that's me able to give it to myself, and it was already there, because it's already in place with a Supreme Court right-of-way. But say I had to beg my neighbor who didn't love me, or the neighbor that's left behind has to beg me, they'll do without getting their piece, it'll never happen that way. Also, I really think the omission of putting it in left a large chunk of areas apparently without a right-of-way, see, there's a really dense concentrated bunch of homes there that are non-conforming. I think if this right-of-way that was in place, that we fought for in 2019, 2011, pardon me, if it were registered and visible, as it is now with the registry, because I put it there, I don't think a lot of this would have even been an issue. There are 10 or 12 or 15 houses up there that rely on passing other people's lands to get in. They still don't have right-of-ways, and I'm not doing anything for them. They signed petitions, we were all made aware at the same time, everybody had the same option, we could have all gone to court together, and three parties went. Two of those houses were purchased by us, one remains, they have their right-of-way. I would be asked to pay a $1,000 fee to come to speak to council and ask them for more space, after I surveyed it and made sure I had elbow room, which I did a survey and moved one of my lines away so I could put this addition out there, but I cannot give it road frontage, it will cut the nose off the face of the rest of the lands that my children are going to inherit. I don't work, I work as an artist from home, my career is kind of in business, and I'm not in that career right now, so I've decided to put my life in the community that I live. I bought these hoses for the children, and it's a good thing, the world's a little bit hard, and it's hard for all of us, so we're getting by together as a group. I need my parents to move next door to me, and I had the ground broke once, I had tractors there once, cleared back, I have had permit after permit authorized, but I keep having to do a little more. I do not want to build my father a small piece of house on something called a crawl space, and it will start up next to a seven-foot foundation and needs to be engineered to a four-foot crawl space. Gentlemen, would you want your house on a dusty crawl space, it's brand new, they don't want us to have access to it. It would be purposeful for storage, it could have a window, it would be purposeful for spare space, but right now, it's just going to be useless to me, useless. It's going to cost almost the same thing as to build a full basement, and it's because it's next to one, it starts at that level for engineering, and so it doesn't bounce off of it and push in, it needs to start seven feet and be staggered in up to a four-foot crawl space, and all in a very small condensed area, because I'm only allowed to build 270 feet additional, where I'm removing a small room, that's 10 by 10-ish, I will have a 275 that I would like to build, plus this 10 by 10 that's going back on, because it has no foundation, that's about 385. I'm requesting about 480 on the main floor, but because the house is small, it's been reduced to 25%. And where my father would appreciate a basement, he could get down and keep the mold and the bugs and whatnot out of, and maybe use for some storage, it would be really nice if it could have a basement under it. And in that policy, if you can, look at that, I question what it does to save any farmland on residential in the first place, and albeit, it's still the same footprint, whether it has a basement under it, or an attic, or two stories, or three, it's based on the footprint of the house. This podium died in, divided in four, regardless of how many layers and how many, how much area. And at one time, it became so confusing, the municipal office was saying it was based on volume, and I was saying, maybe I should build my rooms 20 feet tall and cut them in three, and so volume, area, footprint, they became very confusing, but it's just the one line, and it does read, based on the footprint of the original building, 25% of it. If I want the 480, I'm going to have to put some of it in the basement. If I put it in the basement, I don't have enough room to get to the main bedroom without walking past the bathroom, which that little house has always been like that. There are no non-conforming issues that I see. Once upon a time, the county used to call it non-conforming, until I started calling it that, the word was pulled from a list of words that we were using. They said, we're not calling it that any longer, every property is accessed to it, every property in county is accessible. When this document was originated and signed, it was authorized by John Lorrie, it was put together by Laura Mosher, I'm reading names, because I don't know who everyone is. Laura Mosher built it, I'm not sure what the build of it was, I can see that it's vast and it encompasses saving some land and looking at the future, it wants densely populated areas that are serviced by infrastructure, and that makes sense. And all I'm trying to do, really in the long run, is I'll be taking what's probably a two and a half, like a two-bedroom house, and it may still only be a two-bedroom, or even a one-bedroom when I'm done, because the rooms are so very little, there is no hallway, the hallway walks past the toilet, that's how it is. And it's not that the living like that was wrong, it's just not the living I want to bring my mom and dad to, it's not the house I want to aspire to leave to my children, if I don't have a career, all I'm leaving them is all this hard work that I put in with the county for over 30 years. And I've battled with the road right-of-ways, and I've been doing this since February, just to get my parents out of a big house and settled in, and if I'll be lucky, if I can see it by Christmas. I've had the people, I've had my trustors ordered, cancelled, I've had the ground broken, cancelled, I've moved the line, and all I'm short of, and I don't, it's not a bribe, but all I'm short of doing is paying a $1,000 fee to say, let me consolidate this and get road frontage, because I can't pay that, because I am not giving you road frontage. I'm weary that in the future, I have two and a half or three acres of vacant land that would be more worthy of the road frontage than a one-bedroom addition that I'm looking for, that has deeded right-of-way with the Supreme Court, registered as of this summer, acquired over 12 years ago. I could probably keep talking, my daughter says, do you have your documents? I could probably just sadly recite mine and more, because it's been a long battle of trying to find out who owns what, who owns what, to prove that the ownership of the road was private, to acquiring the, to doling out the three right-of-ways available, acquiring these lots over the course of years, they weren't free, but they weren't expensive, so if you're questioning on the price, get what you're paying for. I know, I bought a very small house with a walk-through washroom, but I really thought I could accommodate my family. And what do I say, I'm here because I would like to add probably about 34% to this house, and I would really like to have a full cellar underneath of it, because I would like to heat the floor and keep the house from going moldy. And if at all possible, I would ask council to take a look And if at all possible, I would ask council to take a look at that amendment that was made. It came out of nowhere and it's reading like a, a fine more than a fee for people that didn't know it was even there. And purchasing houses without being aware that they won't be able to add on to them a size worthy.
Yeah, I think council probably has a good understanding at this point of, of your story and I would at this time ask if council has any questions for you if you don't mind?
Thank you. You could spin that yarn all day.
Are there any questions from council this morning for Ms. Harvey, Innes Harvey? We are, oh, council hurdle does. Okay. There you go. Go ahead councillor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you, just a few questions. And it may not absolutely be necessary to know, but I did miss what your address was and where we would find the property that you're discussing.
Oh, go ahead. The address to the property that requires the addition is 266 Randall. And Randall Road comes off of the Sanford Road behind the hospital, to the west of the hospital, the Valley Regional. The Randall Road connects to Keddie Road, which comes back out on Sanford Road.
All right.
They're essentially lanes and shared driveways.
And, hmm, I have another question. Just for full clarity, I believe you mentioned it, but your lot right now, is it's on a private road, is that correct? Not accessible to a public frontage?
It is not even any longer referred to as a private road. I can provide you with documentation from the Nova Scotia Infrastructure, the transportation. At the point when I began this, it was a Z class road, which meant out of the public courtesy, it was being plowed, but it didn't need to be. So I requested that stop because it was giving the impression that it was public land and it was bringing in public nuisances that I was insurably not responsible for because I didn't bring them there, it was just public. So regardless of what it looked like, now it looks like a lane that is no more than access to three houses from the north and zero from the south. There is no real legal entry from Keddie Road onto Sanford Road. There is no legal documentation of anything. I've searched them all, lawyers have searched them all, county has searched them all and sent it back to us and said, it is a civil problem, handle it civilly. Get your people together and sue for right of ways. And many of the community did. And three, when it boiled down to three houses, came to court. So now it is a shared driveway with 266, 269, and I want to say 257. I own 257 and 266. It's a driveway for 259.
Thank you.
269, sorry, yes. We plow it together. It's in the right of way agreement, there's a lengthy description of what the right of way is and it's that those parties are to clear it if they want it cleared, maintain it if it's destroyed, maintain anything that the public may come in under the interpretation that it's public. It's not. So if I have a destruction to my fence because of public, this is all deeded and it's registered. So I am allowed to cross the line to fix the fence, but my properties must, get this, I live, I live on the other side of a fence to which the right of way exists. I must go to the public Sanford Road and double back and go up this crazy right of way that was forced upon me to get to my other properties because the right of way agreement designed to, to punish us, I don't know, was that we could not cross a line to get from a home we were living in out of the Randall Road. At the time, we didn't own any other properties up there, so I wasn't going over there and I did not care. It does not matter, I will still drive down to the end of my driveway and back up another driveway, that's what people do anyway.
Any further questions councillor?
Perhaps a question of staff.
Sure.
And I'm wondering if what is being proposed by Ms. Innes Harvey would, would fit within what was presented last council session, the bylaw to permit accessory dwelling units in growth centers, the filed 22-04 is, I know this is a, perhaps a specific issue maybe pertaining to some of the public highway concerns, but would this be permitted with the proposed passing of that presented bylaw amendment?
Mayor Matar, do you have a procedural comment?
I do. Well, I appreciate the question of my fellow councillor and it's appropriate to be advised by staff on this particular issue. The purpose of the committee as a whole is to hear the presentation, get your point of view as fully as we can flush it out. You've done very well on the presentation.
Keep digging because there's more if you wanted.
And that's why there's not a lot of questions, I think. Your point of view is quite clear. Through you Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I shouldn't have been addressing the presenter directly, but the purpose of the committee as a whole is to hear the presentation, receive it. Any questions arising from that that are of a technical nature, we can put to staff and be advised by them at a later time so that we can consider what's been presented to us, but to get into a debate on the floor regarding a presentation before a committee as a whole, I don't, I believe is out of order.
It absolutely is. Thank you Mayor Matar. So we'll leave it there councillor hurdle, if that's okay. I would thank you Mrs. Harvey for coming in and sharing your passion and at this point, I would look for a motion from council to receive the presentation this morning. Moved by councillor Granger, seconded by councillor Meisner. And any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify now. And yeah, thank you for coming in this morning and we will be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day y'all, travel well.
You too, stay safe out there. All right, the motion carries, the presentation is received. Next on our agenda this morning, we are 10 minutes behind, but we started 10 minutes late, so we're, we'll keep chugging along. We have the Blomden Natural Society presenting regarding the wilderness area for southwest Kings County. I think Soren Vondrop Nielsen, Celeste Var and Alan Warner are here to present this morning. So welcome to committee of the whole and thank you for being here.
Yep, good morning and thanks for, thanks for letting, for receiving the proposal that was sent to everybody back in June and for listening to us today. So, yes, so what we are here for is really just to expand on that proposal and to seek your endorsement for it, since this is an area that is in Kings County. Oh, I clipped the slides. Maybe the middle one, there. Okay, so the Blomden Naturalist Society is, we're going to be 50 years old next year. It was started in 1974 by a group of naturalists who enjoyed going out, looking at birds and plants, et cetera. And we have now gotten to the point where we are 170 members, paid members, and we have just about 1,600 Facebook followers. So we're a naturalist group, but we have realized that the age we're living in now, it's hard to be a naturalist and not an activist and become active in trying to protect species and space since we live in what geologists now call the anthropocene, which is where in a million years, there will be signs that humans impacted the, the natural environment, which is kind of scary, I think. I'll try and, which button do I push? Okay, good. So with the Nova Scotia Environmental Goals and Climate Change Reduction Act, there was a decision made to protect 20% of Nova Scotia by 2030. So that's not very far away. And there was asked, the public was asked for input and being a naturalist group, we thought we would, would take part in this because this is the kind of thing that we do. Next slide please. Kings County is probably unique within Nova Scotia. In Nova Scotia, there is now 14% protected areas in the whole province. If we look at just Kings County, it's only four and a half percent, which includes Blomden Naturalist, Blom, Blom, Blomden Provincial Park, Cape Split, part of Cloud Lake and the reservoir just south of Wolfville and, and a few other areas. But we're really quite short of protected areas and there are some amazing areas that we feel should be protected. Next slide please. So if we look at southwestern part of, of Kings County, there's a huge area there of, of crowned land and there's, there's a big patch just to the east of, of the existing Cloud Lake Wilderness Area. And there's a few other ones just southeast of that that are potential. Now, if you would click that link please. And then click on the, if you look at the screen very carefully, this is the amount, the pink is the cutting that has been taking place since 2000. So in the last 21 years, according to this map, this is the amount of, of clear cutting that has been taking place. But if you look in the southwestern part of, of Kings County, there's still a lot of green, so there's a lot of potential there to, to create a protected area that would increase the amount of protected area in Kings County and we feel would be quite a benefit.
Maybe one more time.
Okay, yeah, maybe just one more time. So just look at the clear cutting that has taken place in the last 20 years or so. It's rather extensive. Thanks. Next slide please. So what would be the benefits of creating a protected area? I might indicate or just let you know that the, the background on the screens that you're watching were taken from a drone that we flew over the area, not higher than 300 feet, which is the legal limit. But it's a spectacular area. We have had a few field trips down there to the area to look at it. We've had a botanist and an ornithologist go down and survey for birds and plants. And they have indeed found a number of endangered species in this area. There is a fair bit of, there's some recreation taking place down there and that sometimes conflict with a protected area, but I think we would certainly be quite willing to grandfather, say ATV trails and such, and things like that into the area and people want to go, you know, fishing and whatnot and maybe just go sightseeing in the area or hiking in the area. And I think there's a number of benefits, not less, not least, climate change mitigation because we all know that by keeping old growth forest, or older forest intact, that absorbs a phenomenal amount of, of carbon. Next slide please. So why this area? Well, as I said, we have been surveying it and, and we are continuing to refine areas within this, within this area that would be ideal for protection. And it's not as if we can decide what the boundaries are. Really, the proposal that we sent to Minister Hallman with environment and climate change is that, you know, it's up to them really to go in and define the areas, but we are helping in designating which areas we feel would be most suitable. And if you look at the, the areas in dark green, for example, are areas where there are forests older than, than 80 years, which is, which is one of the cutoff marks that, that is being used. So it would not be that whole area, of course, that we would, that we're saying that needs to be protected. But certainly there are some very unique areas within that general area that really deserve protection and, and we're, yes, next slide please. Now, we do realize that part of this area in the northern part has been sown for, I think it's industrial, but I believe it is for windmills. And I think, you know, we certainly support windmills because they are, give us energy that is carbon neutral, except for building the windmills, but anyway, that's. However, I think that that area is somewhat north of the area that we are looking at, so I don't see too much conflict. However, I'm sure that area is quite big, so there certainly would be room for still a windmill park. And as far as we have found out, there's no immediate plan for windmills in this area. It's more it's been designated for that. And I really applaud that you have set aside a way for windmills because I remember several years ago, the, the discussions that took place. So, so I do really see a conflict there. Next slide please. So, so what we're here for is really just to seek your support, potentially a letter to Minister Hallman, supporting the Blomden Naturalists in their request for a protected area within Kings County that I think would benefit all the residents in Kings County. And, and, but we realize it takes time for these things to come about. So part of the proposal is that we are asking for moratorium on cutting forests older than 80 years old. Because if, if they get cut in the next eight years and then they decide, yes, let's have a protected area, well then it's kind of a lost cause because then the areas are not really worth protecting anymore, even though in, you know, 500 years we can come back and there'll be nice forests there, but that's not going to benefit our generation or our children's generation. So thanks very much and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. And we have a few lights coming on, so thanks for your presentation and yeah, I think there are a few lights. Okay, Mayor Matar, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. I was anxious to see how you would deal with the, the issue of the wind farms. And there is, I agree, there's a huge area of provincially owned property up there and, and so it would be perhaps an ideal area that, to approach the province about because no private interests really would be affected. We're very familiar with the area, as you can appreciate, since we looked at it from the point of view of, of the southwest quadrant being the area designated for wind farms, A, because it has the best wind, at least on paper, we have not set met towers up. I can share with you, I think, without disclosing any confidences, that there are some issues associated with CFP Greenwood because their, their landing approaches come over that Do you see any, have you identified any other conflicts in the area in association or anticipated conflicts in the area in association with what it is you propose?
Well, I think, as I mentioned, there are.
If you don't, yeah, go over to that microphone.
There are ATV trails there.
Yes.
And, and, and I think it's important to recognize that that is a, an activity that a number of people, quite a few people enjoy. Now ATV trails, they tend to stick on the trails and I don't really see an issue with having like grandfathering in existing trails. I don't know how the provincial government, how, how they operate when it comes to deciding on a protected areas, but I can imagine whenever they do, there's going to be some conflict with, you know, people who'd like to go fishing or ATV trails. There is quite a road network there, so I don't, I personally don't see an issue. It would be an issue if more trails, like if, if once it's been designated and then more trails are cut, that, that would be an issue, but certainly not existing. And I don't see any other conflict really.
Yeah, and I guess a couple of things.
If you don't mind, sorry, just speaking into the mic and then just saying your name, so for the record.
Alan Warner. Yes, the Cloud Lake has a grandfather, you can use ATVs in a Cloud Lake according, in the same way, in other words, that, that could be extended fairly easily without creating new trails. And right now, they're staying on the exist, those trail, they want to be on those trail.
Excuse me, are they basically fire roads, these, or are they?
They're forestry roads, I think, most of them have been created for forestry.
Oh, for forestry activity.
There's a fairly extensive network and the roads are much easier than going through the thick, the thickets. The other use that's very small there, there are a few leases of cottages on lakes, very small. very small number, again, those could be grandparented into something. And there's, there's actually no problem with fishing or hunting in a protected area, there is a problem with motorized vehicles. Uh, so that would be the, the, maybe the, an issue, but I said, would you grandparent those things in? There shouldn't be a major issue there.
Okay.
Um, there's obviously an issue that, that, um, you know, forest companies would like to be, are cutting some of these trees on crowned land with crowned permission at this point.
Have there been any, um, could I ask one more question?
Oh, please, please do, Mayor Matar.
Have there been any uh, uh, protected species studies in the area?
Yes. You want to ask that?
Yeah, sure. Yes, this is, I, I think I mentioned, there's, there's quite, in, in the proposal we sent you, there's, there are two tables of endangered species within the area where I don't, um...
So these have actually been identified?
Oh, they've been identified.
I did read your presentation.
No, no, sorry. No, no, these have been identified by, by a well-known botanist at Acadia and, and the, um, and a ornithologist.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you both for your answers. Uh, Council Hurdle.
Uh, just a, a few questions through you, Deputy Mayor, if, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, you mentioned a hundred and seventy paid memberships.
Yes.
For the society. Can I ask what the paid membership entails and what the cost of being a member might bring?
Sure. Uh, so the Blom and Naturalist Society has always been open to the public. All our events are open to the general public, um, whether it's our presentations or our field trips, uh, but we do have a paid membership and the only advantage of being a paid member is that they receive the, the BNS magazine called Beyond the Tides. So, and basically paying for the membership is what pays for the publication.
Thank you. Um, and a couple more questions. Um, does the society have a specific definition of what they mean to be protected or is that going on what the province has deemed to be protected with, with past definitions?
Yeah, no, no, we're using the province's definition of a protected area.
The province, the province designates, and this has to be done by the province. In other words, they would designate this area as protected through a lengthy process and then you would, there would be, there's a legislated definition provincially of what is a protected area and what's flexible and what's not in that protected area. Um, the key thing is that the, it's, it's a long process with community consultation to, to obtain a protected area with very specific boundaries. Uh, one of the tricks here, of course, is if there's not a moratorium, uh, this is one of the very few parts of Kings County where there isn't development where this is even viable. You can't have a protected area, and there's, it's not viable to have a protected area in most of Kings County, given the level of development and farmland and all those things. And that's why we're at four point five percent instead of fourteen. Um, so this is our one opportunity in one section of the county where we do have crowned land that is not developed, where there aren't a lot of, there aren't existing uses. Um, and that, that's why it then qualifies for the provincial process, but this provincial process is going to take a number of years and in the meantime, if it is developed or cut, then you lose the opportunity for endangered species in the lands.
And, and, thank you. Uh, my, my last question, and this may be, this is asking your, your thoughts on what you know of the province's definition of protected, so I'll have to do some further research, but do you know if the, the province defines or permits like hunting, hiking, fishing, um, or even deadfall collection permits?
Any of those, those are all acceptable in a protected area. The, the, the issue that generally in protected areas, I guess could be in, is protected areas motorized vehicles. So if we, this is why we said ATVs would have to be grandparented into this area, into this system because they are a motorized vehicle. That's been done before and can be done, there's the flexibility to do that, but in the legislation it would say no ATVs, but it, as I say, Cloud Lake, which is neighboring, has that set up in, in, in this thing. So it's, it's not about the activity and in fact, recreation is encouraged in a protected area, hiking, fishing, whatever. Um, it's the motor, is it the motor piece that's, becomes an issue.
Thank you. And then, of course, the lack of clear, like clear cutting, because forestry is not allowed in a protected area. That is, that, that's the essence of what we're looking at, is to achieving that.
Do, do you know if there's any ability to clear um, fire hazards within that, uh, and with, with the recent fires uh, near Halifax?
Um, I am sure that if there are wildfires, then suddenly all the rules go by the wayside. I might mention that in the northern part of that area, there was a fire um, some four or five years ago, but because I believe that, because it was so remote, like there are no human habitation in it, they, it was just allowed to burn out. Um, and, and when we, we, we have surveyed that area as well and there's a lot of just dead trees standing up there, uh, and it doesn't look like it was fought, but I don't know. Um, but generally, it, it's when forest fires are close to human habitation that all efforts are made to put the doubt. If it's, if it's remote, then, well, I'm sure they follow it and if it begins to expand and become too big, then things are going to happen. And unfortunately, with the fire history, we had this summer where the largest fire on recorded history took place in Nova Scotia. There's, you know, potential for more fires, but anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, any questions from this side of the table over here? Oh, Counsel Armstrong, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of questions. My interpretation of crowned land has always been federal, but we're talking about provincially owned land.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Correct?
Yeah, there is federal, like federal crowned land would be, like, federal land is, 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 is the national parks.
Okay.
And historic sites. Those are federal, but when we talk about crowned land, that's provincial.
Okay. Um, and you made reference to the fact that, um, the pink on the maps that you're showing us isn't necessarily, that would be the best case scenario for you, is to get all of that protected, but...
Well, I mean, the more protection, I think, the better, but.
Yep.
So, so in ide, in an ideal world, sure.
Yep.
But, but realize that that's not practical.
Right. And um, your, your pink area does cross county boundaries, so are you taking this up with Annapolis County in Queens?
Well, the, the, we are looking at areas within Kings County.
Just within?
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing that I, I was looking at the, um, I don't know if it's a motion or your recommendation to us, it specifically says, um, that in the meantime, there's a moratorium on forestry, road building, mining, and wind farm development. And I don't know that that necessarily works for us, so.
On page, yeah, it's sort of the last paragraph in the presentation.
Yeah, on your page five, in bold.
Of the presentation?
Yeah, it might, uh, oh, it might be on, on that draft. I mean, I think that's, we, I guess we're asking, we're not opposed to wind farm development uh, in some sense, but there should be conversa, we should be trying to set the boundaries for this area and work at it before we go. In other words, if, if, if council in its wisdom decided tomorrow to put a wind farm in the middle of this area, that would, could conceivably conflict or defeat the purpose of this, so that there should be conversation about that before going forward with it.
Yeah. It's just that I think that, for the most part, this is something that's been ongoing conversations.
Yeah.
You know, for quite some time here in the county and I think that if we ever got the go-ahead from Fourteen Wing, we'd be moving forward with that.
Well, I think, I think the wording of that maybe needs to change.
Yeah.
I, that the way that's worded is probably not, it, it's not meant to be a statement. Yeah, I think that would, that could be well changed, is that fair?
Yeah.
I also, you also, and when we look at it, and as I said, you look, the notion that we're really going to protect all that pink area is not really what we're talking about. What we're, what we're talking about is trying to define the area within that pink area that's most viable, where there's the best biodiversity and based on our research so far, it's the southern half of that that's the most viable area, not, in fact, the place where you zone the wind farm is among the least attractive, which I think may not have been coinci, you know, that might not have been coincidental. It was clear cut and burnt and whatever, so it probably is the least viable.
Okay.
For a protected area, but this, this, there needs to be discussion on this, I think.
Yep. Yeah, like I said, that just sort of gave me pause when I saw that there.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
No, that's a good point, but I think that we do use the word development. Um, and that was, yeah, we should have been more careful there. Um, and, and this is not as if we are at the end, everything has been done, we're continuing to examine the area. We've had a number of field trips down there. There's a course at Acadia on sustainability, that, where the students are going to be involved in, in seeking public support for a proposal like this and indeed, they're also going, going to go down on a field trip to the area to, to, to look at it. So, so this, we're not at the end, we are still investigating the area and it, what we're really um, seeking is just council's, you know, support, maybe in terms, in terms of a letter to Minister Holman, uh, to support this, um, to support the fact that they look at this area seriously and come up with some boundaries that, you know, they feel will work.
I think also, we would be happy to meet with, and there must be people, and the planners and, you know, who would very, very familiar with the wind and the, this area too, and we'd be happy to meet with them and what concerns they might have over particular pieces of this area as we define more specific boundaries.
Excellent, thank you. I have no further question, last chance counselors, if you have any burning questions to ask. I don't see any. I would thank you all so very much for being here with us today. Um, we're going to have a motion to receive the presentation, um, but I just wanted to say thank you again, thanks to everyone who came out in the audience as well for your participation. And just a reminder, you can always, um, contact council, uh, through our emails, um, that, to add voices or to support or to express your, um, support of something, um, so you're always, of course, welcome to do that, uh, as well.
Good.
But thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. And maybe I have just one last thing. If, if any of you are interested in looking at the area, we'd certainly be happy to set up a field trip and, and, and show it to you because it really is quite a wonderful area.
Yeah, we love field trips. We like getting out of the, the office.
Okay.
Getting out of the chambers and coming to see. Thank you, that's a super kind offer. Um, all right, so motion to receive the presentation moved by Mayor Matar, seconded by Counsel Granger. Any discussion on the motion to receive the presentation from the Blom and Natural Society on wilderness areas for those with southwest Kings County? All in favor or otherwise, please signify in usual fashion. And this does seem maybe a natural point in the morning to stop for more coffee, so we'll take a, a brief recess. Apologies to Ms. Burr, who's scheduled to come next, make you wait, but uh, I, I certainly need some more coffee, so we'll be back in ten and we'll get these folks a chance to exit gracefully. So thank you so much for all being here. You're welcome to stay, you don't have to leave, but if you want to stay for the rest of the day, we're happy to have you. All right, see you back in ten.
Well, we'd be happy to do it if they were serious. We are going to do, we're going to do a public one just for anybody who wants to and later in, in middle October when the leaves are pretty.
Because you would probably have to really know your way.
Well, we've been down there, yeah, we know where we're going. Well, we've been down there, yeah, we know where we're going.
And the development of growth centers. But really, economic development is connected to all of the other key strategic priorities, much like all of the other key strategic priorities are connected to economic development. So you will find throughout this presentation, I have tried to call out where the connections are to some of the other key strategic priorities identified in the strategic plan. So as we were starting the economic development strategy development process, we talked about how economic development really is so broad, it touches everything, everything can be considered economic development if you look at it through particular lenses. So in order to make it a little bit more manageable, we decided to focus on four guiding principles. These would help shape and really focus on our economic development strategy. So I will say the intent of economic development strategy is not a one and done strategy. It is intended to be a little bit more like your strategic plan, it gets updated as we roll along, and so in future, these may change, but these are the four guiding principles we thought were the most important. So that's land, processes, projects, and partnerships in economic development. And I will go through each of those in more detail. So starting with land, so land, this comes from the industrial and manufacturing park development and the development of growth centers, which are two of the pillars under economic development. And this is all about making sure we are ready for development. So this is making sure we have the right zoning, that it's about, you know, do we need to provide roads or other infrastructure? So one of the key problems, both in the county and throughout the region, is there is just nowhere for businesses who are looking to set up. We are hearing from all of our regional partners that there is interest in businesses moving to our area, and we just have no place for them to come. So we are really focused on trying to identify places that we can have that future expansion and welcome these people to our community. So projects, so the municipality is already doing a lot of work in economic development through a lot of the other strategies that council has approved over the last few years. So just a few of these would be our active transportation plan, there is tourism as well, the strategy for belonging, there is a couple of highway interchanges and related infrastructure, joint accessibility plan, and there is work also, as we just heard, happening on renewable energy in the county as well. So processes, so as I said, this connects directly to the good governance strategic focus from the strategic plan, specifically about communications with our residents and stakeholders, as well as process improvement. So it's all about who you talk to when you're trying to start a business in Kings County. You know, it can be confusing if you are a developer or you are somebody who is trying to do business. Who is your first point of contact? Who do you need to talk to to get things done? We also were talking a little bit about a culture of yes. I did do a number of consultations with a number of our regional partners, who highlighted to us that it might be a little bit challenging to get things done, so we just want to, we really want to be a positive, great place where people want to come, they want to set up business, and it's an exciting place to be. So partnerships in economic development, so as I mentioned, I have done a lot of consultations with a lot of our regional partners. These include our two First Nations communities nearby, Annapolis Valley First Nation and Glouscap First Nation. Of course, the Valley REN is one of our biggest partners in economic development throughout the region. I also spoke with the Annapolis Valley Chamber of Commerce, who represent a lot of the businesses in the region, and then still trying, but hopefully we'll get in contact with the Valley Women's Business Network as well. They've had a busy fall. So we took those four guiding principles, land, projects, processes, and partnerships, and turned them into five objectives that we can actually work towards. Each of these objectives have a number of actions attached to them, and I will go through each of those actions in turn. But these are the five principles here, strengthening the role of the business development analyst, making Kings County an attractive, inclusive place to be, making it an easier place to do business, increasing the commercial land stock, and marketing Kings County.
I think we have a light on, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, I can't see them from here.
It's okay, that's my job. I'm just not looking closely enough. Potentially, I think, on the last bit, we talked about the four pillars. Okay, Councilor Meisner, go ahead.
Just in terms of, through you Deputy Mayor, through strategic partners, I'm just wondering, I didn't see Vansda on the list, and I was wondering if they were contacted, or if there was any connection with their organization in terms of economic development?
So I, through you Deputy Mayor, to Councilor Meisner, I haven't spoken to Vansda specifically. We have worked with the community development team and our diversity specialists, who have been working with Vansda, to my knowledge. So there is conversations happening that way, but I myself haven't been in direct contact. But that is a great idea of somebody who we should be talking to specifically about our economic development strategy. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything further from Council at this moment? All right, go, carry on.
Thank you. I am aware this is a long presentation, so.
You're doing great.
All righty, so this is the meat and potatoes of it here. So objective one, and this language is actually borrowed from the communication strategy, if it looks a little bit familiar, it's almost copied and pasted. So strike for the role of the business development analyst to be an internal and external resource for business development support. So in my conversations with both of my colleagues and people outside of the community, you tell them you're the business development analyst, and they go, what is that? What do you do? So it is implementing a standard operating procedure for internal and external requests for business development support. So that is if somebody is reaching out, if they call our lovely ladies at customer service, and they're looking to start a business, who does that phone call go to first? And also internally, is it making sure that we are looking at things through, you know, an economic development lens, along with all of the other lenses that we look through when we are, when we are doing our work here. And then secondly, building relationships with the other economic development organizations and within the community as a whole. So economic development, of course, like it is beyond just the business community, it impacts everybody who lives here in the county. So objective two is help make Kings County an attractive and inclusive place to live, work, and play. So this is basically all of those projects that we are already working on, finding ways that economic development can help support. So action one is support the implementation of the municipality's strategy for belonging. The strategy for belonging has an economic empowerment pillar with a number of actions underneath of that, and it is not the intention of me to take that over, our community development staff do an excellent job with that, but it's just, you know, providing economic development support where needed. Second is the implementation of the active Kings County transportation plan. Again, same thing, you know, we have staff who are, that is, they have ownership over that, but it's just helping support the transportation plan. So we know having the ability for people to get around how they want, making it safer and easier for people to do, you know, use active modes of transportation, is connected to economic development, because the more people can move around, the easier it is for them to get to employment, to go to shops, things like that. Action number three is support the development of a regional recreation center. So this has been, at least an early version of this idea has been released publicly, and actually, this is something that came from the Chamber of Commerce, in terms of something that they would like to see a bit of a focus on, and kind of looking at how we can tie that into economic development. Of course, we know these are usually great attractors of people to a specific area, and there is economic spinoff that comes from just bringing people to, to a centralized area for different programs and, and things like that. So objective two is a little bit long, so it's on two slides. Action four and action five both comes directly from the strategic plan, so supporting the role of broadband and working with telecommunications providers for cellular coverage as well. We have heard for years, the struggles that businesses, particularly in the rural parts of our county, have with broadband, access to broadband, and how that impacts their ability to do business. And of course, over the last few years, the ability to do business online has been imperative. That need to pivot when, when things were closed was important. Action number five, this unfortunately became a lot more important over the summer, and we are aware that there is not a whole heck of a lot we can do to, you know, get the telecommunications providers to, you know, provide better coverage, but it's working with our municipal, our other regional partners, maybe lending our voice and kind of impressing upon telecommunications providers the importance of continuing to extend cellular coverage into areas of our county that don't have it. And there are fairly densely populated areas of our county that don't have cellular coverage, which is quite surprising, and like I say, has moved beyond the realm of economic development into public safety. Action number six is support the development of renewable energy projects. So like I say, again, we talked about wind this morning, there is, you know, the opportunity for solar as well. And then also potentially, you know, further down the road, if something comes up for tidal in the Bay of Fundy, we are fortunate to have that long, beautiful Bay of Fundy coast. It is something that, you know, not every location has, is access to such impressive volumes of water. So it's a little bit further down the line, most likely, but something certainly want to keep an eye on from an economic development perspective. So objective number three is make Kings County an easier place to do business. So this is all about that process improvement that I talked about earlier, really connects to the good governance pillar in the strategic plan. So I spoke with the finance team, but in the strategic plan, one of the actions is to review the rates and charges levied on commercial properties. So the finance team does a great job of doing this year in and year out, but there may be an opportunity to do maybe a more fulsome review, or look at things from a different angle. So that is why that one is there. Support the review of the municipality's policies, processes, and procedures to identify opportunities for efficiency improvement. So I know there has been some work ongoing on this over the last year or so, and it's just, again, providing an economic development lens into that work, making sure that it's not, you know, it, we're not prioritizing developers, but we did get feedback from developers, we want to make sure that feedback is taken into consideration. And then connected to that is action three, supporting the investigation of the benefits of implementing a process improvement program within the municipality. This is a recognition that we can always do better, and there are always new ideas that can come forward, and having a formalized process improvement program, you may have heard of some of them, this would be your Six Sigma, this would be your lean, this would be your ISO certification, might be something that is beneficial. Again, looking into that in the future. So objective number four, this is, this is where land comes back in, so increasing commercial land stock. So action number one is partnering with planning and land use to support the opportunity for business growth and growth centers. So I will say Kings County has our big fish, if you, you know, from a business attraction standpoint, and they are, of course, a very good partner for Kings County, but we really do not have the ability to support a second big fish. So our economic development really is going to focus on our small and medium-sized enterprises. Those are our home-based businesses, our entrepreneurs, people who are already here who want to start a business, or people who have ideas, they want to bring them to Kings County. So of course, we, as we spoke about in the last presentation, we do want to concentrate growth in our growth centers where we already have the infrastructure in place. So it's making sure that people can, you know, if you live in a growth center, you can do business in that same growth center, or in a nearby growth center. We want to give access to where the people already are. Action number two, this is connected to the highway interchanges, develop a business case for the creation and sale of commercial lots in the municipality. And then action number three, if feasible, support the development of commercial lots in the municipality. I will say this comes from ideas that are coming around these new highway interchanges, but it's not the only place that we are looking. We are looking right across the county, if there's the opportunity, if we have land, that might, that might work, you know, look at, see if there's a business case for developing And then action number four, act four, support the review of existing municipal land, as I just said. And then action number five, reviewing existing open space, open space policies, these come from the subdivision bylaw, from an economic development perspective. So again, we are looking for land that municipality potentially already has, or can get access to that can help support economic growth. And then the last one, market Kings County. We want to tell everybody how awesome we are once we get all of this other stuff done. And we are awesome now, I should point that out. But action number one is partner with IT on a revamped website to include economic development data and information. We are not looking for an entirely new website, but like I said, we can update some of the information under the doing business in Kings County section of the website, just to make it easier for people who are looking to do business in the county, they can find key statistics, they can see what our main, our main industries are, that sort of thing. They shouldn't have to go digging for that, we should be able to tell people what's going on in our, in our area. And then action number two is partnering with communications to develop marketing materials for business attraction. This is somewhere where I spoke a lot with the Valley REN, because of course, they do a lot of the business attraction work in the area. So this might be looking at developing things that have our brand on it specifically. We are not really trying to compete so much with everybody else in the area, but we do want people to know Kings County is here and that we are awesome. And then, like I say, with the Valley REN, partnering with them to employ their land asset database. So they are working on creating a database for use for all of the regional partners, so we can identify where the opportunities are for businesses to come, whether that's land, places for rent, places for sale, that people can come and start businesses. So that process is ongoing, and we just need to kind of finalize who owns what, and where the inquiries go based on, you know, where, where the interest is. So those are the five objectives, and their associated actions. The idea is for it to be initial steps down a path, and that path, as I said, can change going forward, but we wanted to focus on those specific areas. So as I said, I did meet with several organizations to solicit feedback, including the Chamber, Glouscap Ventures, Valley REN, a number of our neighboring municipal units. And then developers weren't contacted specifically for this, but we did survey some developers for the process improvement report, and some of that feedback was incorporated here. I also spoke to the planning and land use department, community development, and our IT folks as well, to get their feedback on areas specifically that touch them. As I said, everything is economic development, and economic development touches everything. So I want to make sure really maintaining a good sense, a good sense of that internally. So I will say there are some things that were raised during consultations with stakeholders that are not in this document as of right now. The first one, and the one that came up over and over and over again, was housing. And basically, it is something that we've considered, but we felt we didn't want to just put housing in economic development strategy. We felt it was such a big issue that it really deserved a strategy of its own. And it's something that I think, I can't speak for staff as a whole, but I think something that everybody is keenly aware of is, is the lack of housing, and the lack of affordable housing in the area. Transit as well is something that was brought up with a number of stakeholders. So we do not have direct control over Kings Transit, they are a municipal corporation, but we can certainly bring concerns about transit to Kings Transit. And of course, they, as has been mentioned, they are working on a number of studies at the moment, developing a master plan, so hopefully we can continue to work to, to make transit better and make it easier for folks to move around our region. Tourism and accommodations, there is, you know, there is always conversation about our tourism industry, it is a large and growing part of our economy, and it's making sure that we are supporting tourism in a way that makes sense for our region. And this is basically one of those areas that where we had, we had to focus on a few specific areas of economic development. It was decided that tourism would probably wait as a focus until a future economic development strategy. It's on the radar, and we will continue working towards it, but it was felt that we needed to kind of get our ducks in a row first, so we could really focus on that. Warehouse of cold storage space and meeting and conference spaces, we're both brought up specifically by the Chamber. We know, and we have known for years, that a big impediment to business growth in the area is the lack of warehouse and cold storage space in the region, and we have a number of manufacturers in the area, and they are, they are, you cannot find a piece of warehouse space anywhere in the valley. So there may not be a direct role for the county in this, which is why, again, it didn't make the, the economic development strategy as is, but it is certainly something that is on our radar, and we will look for ways to help support that. And then again, cellular coverage came up specifically with the consultations I had following the floods in July, and we, we will do what we can, but what we can do will likely be fairly limited. So the next steps for the economic development strategy, I am here today, committee of the whole, to get your feedback, but I will take away, there are, say, maybe things that I missed, things you would like me to reconsider. And then there are additional external partners that we would like to talk to, and this is not an exhaustive list, and I encourage if there are, if there are organizations in your communities that I'm not aware of, or that haven't been contacted, please let me know. We are trying to get feedback throughout the county. So there are a few additional neighboring municipal units that we were not able to get in touch with before today, so we would like to get, to chat with those folks as well. Annapolis Valley First Nation, we do have a good and ongoing relationship with, we have a number of projects that are in the works with them, but haven't specifically talked to them about the strategy yet. And as I said, I've been trying to get ahold of the Valley Women's Business Network, but it's, it's been a, a bit of a challenging time with scheduling right now, so they are on the list for continued feedback. And then, as you probably saw in your agenda package, this is not a very pretty draft at the moment, so we want to make it nice and pretty before we bring it back to you in, in the future. And I did see that light go on.
Okay, are you ready for some questions?
I am, yes.
Okay, perfect. Councilor Meisner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Just in terms of the meeting warehouse cold storage type space.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, are you familiar with the station Food Hub and Newport Station in Hans County?
I am, yes, yes.
So that would be a good connection, I think, there as well, just to see how, what they are doing and what they offer.
Yes.
They do have a beautiful commercial kitchen space and all the storage and things there, so that might be something that we might be able to look into, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, absolutely. What the business model they've got out there is really, really fantastic, particularly for like, say, small, the smaller businesses who are looking to get into that, but yeah, absolutely, we should look into, we should touch base with them, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Hurdle.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you. Just didn't see it in your actions, although I'm assuming it's there. Will you be coming up with any suggested recommendations for bylaw amendments to facilitate easier economic exchange and development? Is that, will that be part of your actions?
To you Deputy Mayor, to Councilor Hurdle. It's not, it's specifically anticipated at the moment, of course, we are open to everything and anything, so we'll be working specifically with the other internal departments to see if there are need for bylaw changes. There aren't very many bylaws, I don't think there are any bylaws really at the moment that specifically impact economic development, so if we wanted to do something in the future, that's definitely something we could take a look at. Yeah, we're not ruling it out.
And you, you mentioned having a collection of land, available land, forgetting the term of, but will you also include in that some of the underutilized lots that may be sitting, developed from previous use, but no longer being utilized for whatever purpose they originally developed for?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's the land asset database, I think is what the, the REN is currently calling it. It's a, it's a bit of a mouthful. So the intention, we do not want to be real estate brokers, so the intention is just for us to make connections between what we know is available and what people are looking for. So some of those may be publicly, you know, listed through real estate brokers, but we do also have contacts in the community, we are aware of things that might not necessarily be formally on the market, and so we continue to, to use those contacts as well to try and match people up with, with what's available.
And then my final question, and this is, have you contacted any of the service clubs, like the Lions Club, or any of the community associations that, although not directly providing services in the normal economic sense, they're still key players in the economy of Kings County?
Yeah, absolutely. So I have spoken with both the Lions and the Rotarians, specifically the Rotarians in Wolfel, but I am aware that there are many more service organizations out there doing a number of wonderful things for the community, so it's looking at ways, you know, that we can facilitate contacts with those going forward. Partnerships is an ongoing thing, and there is always more people to talk to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Granger.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thanks for the good work you're doing. Typically, before I have a party, I clean my house, and we seem to want to invite a lot of people to our municipality, but our infrastructure is awful. That includes roads, that includes power. So how do we roll that into working much more closely with the province and having more of, this is where you need to go, rather than halfway patching a road, and then someone wants to open a business at the other end of it, but that hasn't been patched yet, so, you know, now it's flooding, and so there's so many, it seems like you've got like a huge plan, and bringing them all together, and they're all super valid and really important, but to me, it, starting at the bottom, so to speak, which is our roads and infrastructure, if we want more cold storage and storage and things like that, sometimes cold storage requires a water system that makes it stay cold. So those things are things to me that, you know, if you start from the bottom up, and you're asking businesses to come, but there's no cell coverage in Baxter's Harbor, but that's where they live. So how do we plan on kind of approaching the province about this?
Yeah, absolutely. So I will say, we do have, you know, there are, economic development, as I said, is not just me, it is.
I understand.
It is all of us. So there are other municipalities here who do have better contacts than I do with, with our other levels of government, and it will be leaning on those folks as well to help make connections. Hopefully, like I said, the intent here is really to start at the bottom with, we cannot do all of this, you know, high-level economic development if we do not have the roads, the infrastructure, the cellular service, the broadband coverage. So it, we really are trying to start at the bottom, and that's why I say this will be a multi-strategy process. I mean, economic development is never done, but we do definitely want to start with making it a place that you can do business, wherever that may be in the county, and like, as you said, infrastructure is a key piece. So like I say, I will, I will be working with, with the contacts here at the, at the county who can help point us in the right direction of where we need to go with particularly the province, but also the federal government as well for, for infrastructure help for some of these plans. Thank you.
And I also wanted to know, I hear a lot from my constituents, doesn't economic development work with planning? Because some people try to open a business and they're bleeding money, when you open a business, you're bleeding money at the beginning anyway. So a lot of times, inspection and permits and that kind of thing all don't jive together, they're months apart sometimes, and that can really hurt a small business specifically.
Yes.
So how do we kind of Band-Aid that?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is why we really wanted to focus on processes and process improvement this time around. So I will say, just mostly for the public's knowledge, that I am not in the planning department, but I do work, you know, do work closely with the planning department, and I've had conversations with planning about how do we make sure that we are looking at things through an economic development lens moving forward, which goes back to that strengthening the role of the business development analyst, so it's clear that, you know, I am involved or I need to be involved, but also for the public, you know, making sure that they're aware that we are looking at things through economic development, as well as protecting agricultural land and all of the other priorities that, that we have through planning. But I can't speak for planning specifically.
I understand that. And one last thing, if I may?
Yeah, please.
As far as education, we want people to understand what we're doing, but we're not so great at educating them. Do we have any plans, I mean, a website's great, but there are other ways to educate people? So do we have anything in the, in the, in our thoughts about education?
So we don't have anything specifically about education at the moment. We do want to start getting the word out there about, you know, what we're doing, what we hope to do, the things that we have already done, but I will make a note of that, that we should be including an educational component as well. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question, if I might. I have no other lights from Council. When you were first going through, and it sort of came up at the end, was, the one thing I felt was sort of missing was transit, the transit piece, particularly, it's at the front of my mind because they're doing the survey.
Yeah.
Right now, on what we want transit to look like in the future, and identifying, you know, where potential routes could go, and I think it makes sense to sort of line up our future, you know, particularly where we're talking about land in this, you know, if we're looking at opening up areas for commercial development, if we're looking at industrial parks to ensure that our transit folks know that and have it in mind when they're talking about their plans, because of course, that brings employment and, and trades and all that types of things. So it's not really a question, I guess, but that was sort of the one thing that I felt was missing, but then when I saw it on your list at the end, you know, I'm glad to see it sort of in the pipe, and that we're sort of working together with our parties, like Kings Transit and Valley Waste, and when we're looking to, you know, map things out for the future. Because we have a lot, sometimes it feels like, you know, we're talking about these things, but the dots don't get connected until later in the process, and we can save ourselves sometimes some headache and some logisticals. logisticals, logistical complications when we kind of get on, out front of those things. So that was the one thing I had. And I guess my question is, out of the five objectives, do you think there's one that's sort of the most important, that, that is the most pressing in terms of where we're going with business development in Kings County?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, again, not to, I would, I would say processes is probably, we need to make sure that we are doing things efficiently. We, you know, there have been other councils in the province who have been accused of not doing things as efficiently as possible. And I will leave it at that, I won't name them. But I think making, making sure that we, we are getting out of the way for not only economic development, but housing as well. As I said, housing is the big issue, and you can't have economic development without housing and vice versa. So I think if we can work on processes first, that would be, that would be what I would like to see the most improvement on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I could go on a tangent about transit, but like I said, Kings Transit, I know is doing a lot of work, and hopefully we will be able to help provide suggestions and feedback to them as, as they go forward, so.
Awesome. Mayor Mertesacker, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. Very energetic for your first time before us.
And I skipped a coffee this morning.
Congratulations. Yes, I had time for two or three myself. A lot of comments perhaps rather than questions, just for consideration in the, in, your job's a very important one. Comments have been made about, about the attraction of businesses, and big fish and little fish. My personal view is that it's great to have big fish, but when the big fish fails, all the little fish that were dependent on the big fish go as well, and that's devastating to a community. Never live in a mining town if you expect to live there a long time. But speaking of the big fish, to pick on Michelin for a moment, not picking on them, it's actually congratulating them. They point out that, that if, if they are to expand, and they, and they did this the last time as well, and they pointed it out, and yet I don't think they feel it's been, I, I certainly don't feel it's been completely addressed. As that is, when they bring people here, when they expand plants, one of the prime considerations, believe it or not, is, is what's available for the people that they're going to be bringing in. What's available from a social point of view, from a recreation point of view, from a cultural point of view, from, in other words, do we have the table set in such a fashion that attracts them? And to Counselor Granger's point, it's always dangerous to send out invitations to the party until you've got a space to hold the party in, or the necessary accoutrements to satisfy the people when they come. If they come and find nothing, then they leave again. So that involves all kinds of things. The recreation facility type situation, people visiting our coast and not, there isn't proper parking, there isn't proper signage to, to direct them there, and at least not consistent On the transit side, the feds are, are doing a cross-country consultation on transit. I was on their query. They, they, they hold sessions where they make a presentation, say this is what we're doing, and then ask for input. And it was absolutely clear to me and, and another, and Mayor Donovan, actually, was the other local person on the, on the webinar, is that it's totally big city oriented, and that we should be contacting those people and telling them that, you know, we have a transit system that travels the entire length of the valley. And if they're handing out money or requesting applications, that they've got to give some consideration to rural transit, which is just as important, while not perhaps equally as important, but very important in the scheme of things. I know they have to address big city transit. We only have one big city. So let's look at the rest of the province as far as Nova Scotia is concerned. So we should be getting our oar in there. I can see at some point, when you're ready, a conference being held that invites developers and persons that aren't here and might be interested in being here, and showcasing what it is that we have, once we have it to showcase.
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you for your presentation. It's important that we concentrate on this.
Thank you, Mayor, for those comments. Anything further from counsel this morning? Okay, I don't see any. So as Ms. Burr indicated, we're not approving the plan today, but rather getting feedback. And I assume you're open to, if we think of something later?
Yes, absolutely.
We can send you an email?
Please continue to give me feedback.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I echo the mayor's comments. That's nice to hear from you and have you before us this morning, and, and have your energy about business development. Very exciting. And thanks so much for being here.
Thank you for being so welcoming for my first time.
So just looking for a motion to receive the presentation this morning. Moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Granger. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor or otherwise, please signify no. Next up, we have item eight on our agenda this morning, under Financial Services. Got Mr. Scott McKay here to talk about streetlights and the motion to receive the presentation carried unanimously. Mr. McKay, the floor is yours. Go ahead. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, counsel, small counsel today. Appreciate your, your time this morning. So I'm here today to introduce an amendment to Bylaw 45 for street lighting, the bylaw, and that is in the interest of clarifying the process for ratepayers to initiate the installation of new streetlights across municipality. And the recommendation this morning will be that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council give first reading to amend Bylaw 45. Street lighting is attached to the September 19th, 2023 Committee of the Whole agenda. So for a little bit of background, back in 1976, province of Nova Scotia put in place an act respecting street lighting charges in Kings County. And in April of 1977, the municipality of the County of Kings adopted its street lighting bylaw, Bylaw 45. It's undergone several changes over the years, but currently lacks clarity with respect to the process that ratepayers can follow in requesting the installation of new streetlights in their area of the municipality. The changes being recommended today are intended, are intended to provide that clarity for the public. The process recommended will provide the public with a summary of what's required by the municipality in order to consider the addition of streetlights and to set expectations for the public with respect to the processing of their application. An accompanying standard operating procedure is now in final draft form, and that will ensure proper accountability is in place in the process, and that a prompt response to such requests is provided to the public. These changes will result in no additional expenses for the municipality, as streetlight-related costs will continue to be recovered through the rate that we charge every year to, to affected properties. And the rate is set each spring as part of the budgeting process. This is a, a small visual there, but an important change that we will see this year is in respect to the public petition process that would, would be followed on a go-forward basis. On the current slide, the green line represents a proposed street lighting installation, and this is absolutely just for illustration purposes. It is neither a, a current street lighting area or an application in front of us, but just an example. So past iterations of the bylaw would have surveyed all 19 properties that touch on that streetlight, uh, streetlight string. However, only 10 of those properties are actually affected by the streetlight and would be charged for it. Owners of undeveloped properties, properties without structures, are not charged for street lighting in, in an area that is serviced by streetlights. When, when we sent out petitions before, there was a tendency for properties that did not have development on them, did not have structures, that they would not respond to the surveys that we sent. And as a result of that, and no, no response means a no vote, and it was virtually impossible to get a positive two-thirds acceptance of a, of a petition that we, that we sent out. So on a go-forward basis, same map with a few X's on there, on a go-forward basis, only properties which would be charged would be petitioned. And then a more relevant vote of true stakeholders would be taken, and this would result in a stronger likelihood of community support for the request of street lighting installation. The nine properties on this, this illustration marked with an X are all undeveloped parcels, would never be charged for the street lighting as long as they are undeveloped, and would not be petitioned for a vote. In this case, only seven developed property owners would be required to provide a positive vote versus 13 on the prior slide in order to have an approval. The vote would be a truer reflection of the neighborhood's support. So once again, the recommendation that would be before you today is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council give first reading to amend Bylaw 45, street lighting, as attached to the September 19th, 2023 Committee of the Whole agenda. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, should you have.
And we do have a couple of questions. Counselor Hurdle, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. There's a requirement for, on the application to mark approximate locations of existing poles. Is, is that an absolute requirement? Is, is the application going to fail if the applicant doesn't mark existing poles?
No. Be honest with you, it's a very interactive, it's going to have to be a very interactive process, where staff are going to have to work with, with the applicants to have a complete understanding, make sure that both parties have a complete understanding of the application. The, the purpose is really for us to know who we need to be surveying or petitioning. So really, the order, you know, if we have a discussion with somebody, we know where they want the streetlight string to go from point A to point B, then we're going to be, be working with them to identify all the properties that are, are within that area.
So my understanding being, previously you might survey a larger area, but now you can, as an applicant, refine that requested application to perhaps a single street or even half a street? Is that?
Well, through you, Deputy Mayor. It's, we did, we did have single street applications before, but the problem that we faced was that there were a lot of vacant properties within the area that we were surveying or petitioning and getting no response back, and we had to register that as a, a non-supportive vote. So that's really what we're trying to avoid.
Okay. And is, I know in the past, there's been issues, and you acknowledge as such with engagement of property owners, but is there any thought of requiring an affirmed engagement, being that someone doesn't open their mail, and then they're considered a no vote, as opposed to ensuring that there's a required amount of people giving an act of no or an act of yes?
Through you again, Deputy Mayor. We, we are limited as to the amount of contact information we have from many of our, of our ratepayers, and really a mailing address in most cases is all that we have. Having said that, I do know that most proponents that come forth with an application tend to become cheerleaders for the cause and, and tend to be the ones that are kind of pushing their neighbors to keep an eye on their mail to make sure that they get a response out there, or a response back to us. So we would depend on that a little bit, but, you know, we're, we are really limited as to, you know, contact information with these folks. You know, we could use social media to kind of get that out there as well, but again, limited, limited effectiveness with that if you're looking at a very specific area.
And, and thank you for bringing this to counsel or Committee of the Whole. I have a lot of people within my district who are very interested in going forward with this process, and once approved, I'll be sure to pass it off to them to submit an application.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Mertesacker?
Thanks for your presentation. The, just questions this time. So if, if streetlights are installed, then it's the capital cost that's amortized through the annual charges? Is, is that what's happening?
We take, we take the, essentially the bills we're getting from Nova Scotia Power, and dividing that by the, the total number of streetlights or houses that are charged for street lighting across the county.
So is it a combination of capital costs and, and electrical costs?
I believe the installation cost is, is something that would be in there the first time around, but once it's done, it's done if, if that the case.
And so is, is, is the number of streetlights on a street impacted by the number of houses? Three houses on a street with, with 10 lots on it? The seven vacant lots, they don't have to vote on whether the streetlights go in, but are they being charged the, the same fee once the streetlights do go in?
Through you again, Deputy Mayor. The, the street lighting charge is the same rate rate across the county. So that, that was a recent change that we affirmed last year.
So that's a yes, is it?
Hmm?
Is that a yes?
No, the vacant lots are not charged.
Vacant lots are not charged.
Vacant lots are not charged.
So once, once that vacant lot becomes a lot with a house on it, do they then get charged?
Yes, yes, they would at that point in time.
And, and when a person constructs a house on that vacant lot, are they aware that that charge is something that they can anticipate?
That would have to be something that would be added in terms of what we communicate to people. You know, certainly we do get questions that come into us about, you know, in the finance department about, you know, what area rates are on a particular area if somebody is buying a vacant lot. And we would certainly disclose that at that point in time. It's, it's similar to, if you will, the, the road maintenance. You know, we have road maintenance, area rates that are in place, somebody may subdivide a lot, they're going to get hit again with another, another, another charge. Or if somebody buys a property in that area and builds on it, that charge automatically gets added as well in terms of a developed property versus a vacant property. So similar in nature to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. I'm, I'm not quite sure, 1976 was a long time ago. The province probably looked a little different than it does now. So I'm kind of wondering, because I'm a little confused. Nova Scotia Power owns the poles, yes?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I do believe.
Okay. So the poles are usually right beside the road, which the province owns from the center line, 32 feet, I do believe, from there?
You're asking engineering questions that are maybe above my, above my limits.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out where the municipality fits in in this. If the pole is owned by Nova Scotia Power, and they provide the power, and the pole is on a provincial road, I'm not sure what we're doing in the, in the picture.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We, we received the power bill from the, from Nova Scotia Power for the service of street lighting in any street in the, in the county that unless a, a street light is-
Is that because of this bylaw?
Pardon me?
Is it because of this bylaw?
I, I, my understanding, and again, I'm not, not in, in public works, but my understanding is that is passed off to the municipalities across the board by Nova Scotia Power.
Wondering if we've ever thought of going solar on these lights, so that there isn't a bill that comes when sun's out, we're making, we're making light?
Certainly something to take into consideration. I will share with, with the engineering department to see if that is a, is a possibility. But again, I don't know that we've ever, ever gone down that road before.
I'd really be interested to find out what kind of savings that would equate to in the long run.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hurdle, again.
Thank you, through you. I'm just looking through our policy on fees for street lighting, and I'm not finding a reference to the installation cost. Would that be amended to the policy in, in the future?
Yes, I, through you, Deputy Mayor. I, I really should be deferring off to, to engineering to find that out for you, for sure. So I, you know, I don't want to- So I, you know, I don't want to provide information that's erroneous, but it is something that I would have to find out to be certain.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. No other lights. Why is it two-thirds and not fifty-fifty for yeses?
Really, we went through about fifteen other municipalities across the province. They were all either two-thirds or three-quarters. We felt two-thirds was what we'd been using before. We felt that it was kind of a happy me, a good place to rest, a fair, you know, way of ascertaining true support from a community. It's a bit of a, I guess, a dart shoot to see where it lands, but we felt that two-thirds was a reasonable number.
Okay. And my second question, so you, and I think it was answered, they're just, the community is just surveyed by mail, right? Like, that's it?
Yes, that's the only thing that we are proposing. And again, we lack proper communication tools. Phone numbers, we don't keep on our system unless people give them to us. Emails, we don't keep unless they give them to us and ask them to store them. So really, mailing addresses is what we live and die by.
That makes sense. And then, okay, my last question is, so when we have like, and this might be, again, maybe an engineering question, but when we do things like sidewalk priority lists, we talk about things like school zones and pedestrian walkways and safety and not necessarily road design, but I know in all the conversations I've had about street lighting, a lot of it's like, well, there's a really dangerous turn here, or my driveway's in a gully and it's very dangerous to pull out at night, and that seems to be the rationale that people want, that people use to say they want streetlights. And we don't seem to take in any of that into consideration. It's just like, if the community puts it together and asks for it, and they can convince enough of their neighbors to vote for it, then they get it. And to me, that doesn't have a, oh, I'm in debate and I'm in the chair, but, so I'm just curious why we don't take those aspects into account, and I understand, like, it's probably just that this is an administrative issue, right? The way we approach it at this point is from an administration perspective and not an engineering or public safety perspective. And I was curious if staff had those conversations?
Yeah, we've had, there have been conversations with individuals looking for, say, single lights, or on a larger property, a couple of lights, and we really put them in contact with Nova Scotia Power directly for private lights, so they would pay that themselves, although it is a little more, quite a bit more expensive to do that than to have, say, a streetlight string in a community. But really, those, if I'm understanding correctly, sound like more individual circumstances.
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Hurdle.
Thank you for taking my third light, and I apologize for asking...
Oh, no, it's all good, we're still on questions.
You, your question around two-thirds gave me another thought, so through you. With a two-thirds requirement, I know oftentimes, we don't run into a perfect two-third scenario of housing, so if the vote or the survey goes very close, will the, will it fail positively or fail negatively if you don't have a perfect two-thirds? If that makes sense? This is a math question, perhaps?
Well, I think we would figure out, through you, Deputy Mayor, we would probably figure out exactly what it takes, like on that example I had of seven units, not six. I had seven calculated as meeting the requirement. I think if we set two-thirds as the requirement and we do not meet that and install it, we may be dealing with some upset customers potentially who are, you know, forced to pay a street lighting fee. So in my estimation, I would say that we move round up.
And so, in the communication letter out, would it state specifically, this is the number to succeed in your streetlights or fail? I asked this because over the weekend, well, last week, I was asked about clarity on sending out these letters by somebody who was very interested in having street lighting, and they wanted to make sure it was absolutely clear what a successful number of votes in favor from the public would be. So I asked, I asked the question, but I'll leave it to you.
Well, through you, Deputy Mayor. I've actually not had the chance to sit down with our engineering technologists to take a look at the existing letter that has gone out in the past, but it would be something that we would revisit. I think we have to be as fully open and transparent as we possibly can be with any of our surveys, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no further lights, so just if we could see the recommendation on the screen. I believe it's that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council give first reading to amend bylaw forty-five street lighting as attached to the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three Committee of the Whole agenda. If there's no further questions, I'd look for mover, moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Meisner. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I would look to call the question, and all in favor or otherwise? Oh. Surprise! We'll do that one more time, because I was not ready. Okay. No, councillor Hurdle, congratulations on being the lone vote on that motion. It fails for lack of quorum. All in favor or otherwise, please signify now on your voting apparatus. Thank you. And this will come to us again, of course, at Committee of the Whole for final approval in October. All have voted in favor, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. McKay, for your presentation. Item B, Committee consolidation, audit, and budget and finance. Mr. Mike Livingston is here also from finance to give us the rundown on this item. So, Mr. Livingston, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, council, or Committee of the Whole council. Here to present the consolidation of the audit committee with the budget and finance committee. So a quick bit of background for you. The budget and finance committee terms of reference has already gone through a review process and was favorably received, but part of that review came to some consideration of consolidating the budget and finance committee with the audit committee. That notion was brought to council, and the consolidation was approved by council pending review of the audit committee's terms of reference. So that audit committee terms of reference has been completed and is attached to the request for decision as appendix A. Primarily, the proposed changes to that terms of reference were to make more explicit reference to the Municipal Government Act and the specific requirements that the Municipal Government Act has for inclusions in the terms of reference and the different responsibilities of an audit committee. As well attached to the request for decision is appendix B and C, which are the proposed terms of reference for the consolidated committee, the audit and finance committee. Appendix B is a sort of track changes copy of the proposed terms of reference. You can see everything with explanations as to what was added or possibly removed. And then appendix C is a cleaned-up version, just a little bit easier to read and review. The terms of reference of the consolidated committee contains all of the elements that were identified in each of the individual terms of reference reviews, so any element that was identified for budget and finance to be added or amended, and then anything that was identified for audit committee. Some key features of the consolidated terms of reference are that the committee composition would include both the mayor and deputy mayor, which is an element brought over from budget and finance committee, and that the committee would have two citizen representatives, which is a requirement of the Municipal Government Act and is carried over from the audit committee. And then, of course, the committee would be made up of another two members of council. Another key consideration in the proposed terms of reference is the avenue for accountability reporting. So the current proposed terms of reference would see that the quarterly accountability reports would be delivered in detail to the proposed audit and finance committee, and that committee would have the opportunity to pose questions and get clarification on the reports, and then would be asked to recommend those reports through to municipal council to receive as information. So that would differ from the current practice where the budget and finance committee is receiving a detailed report and posing questions and getting clarification on the reports, recommending them through to Committee of the Whole, where the remaining members of council would receive a more summarized version of the reports, and then would make a recommendation through to municipal council to receive the report. So the key difference being that the entirety of council isn't receiving a specific report from staff on the accountability reports, and it wouldn't be in a broadcasted session of committee or Committee of the Whole or council. So just wanted to make sure I highlighted that particular difference. So then the recommendation would be that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the consolidation of the audit committee and budget and finance committee into the audit and finance committee as described in the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three request for decision. I'll happily take any questions you have on the matter.
I have a question, only because I read it and now I can't find it. How many times a year will the committee meet? How often?
So a minimum of three times a year as legislated by the MGA. It's likely that that meeting will happen more frequently. The meeting schedule would have to be established by the committee, but for instance, in order to have quarterly accountability reports, there will be likely a need for more than three meetings a year.
That was a noted discrepancy. I thought, okay, well, we need to have at least four probably, but if that three comes from the manual, I think it's probably fine. Any other questions from council at this time? Item's not totally new to us, certainly not those of us who sit on budget and finance. Councillor Armstrong.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, for your presentation. I know that this has been talked about for quite some time, and I sat on the audit committee when it was first set up, and I've sat once on budget and finance, just sort of warm in a seat. But I got the impression that the audit committee is very hyper-focused on the financial part of it, the financial reporting and things like that. Budget and finance also discussed, like, budget timelines and presentations and how those presentations should be made. Will that still be part, will that be moved over to the audit committee? Like, will citizen members have an opportunity to discuss with council members how the budget will be brought forward, in what format, in what timeline, and all that other stuff? Or is that something that is just going to be dropped altogether?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to councillor Armstrong. Those items will be the responsibility of the audit and finance committee, and yes, the citizen representatives will take part in those discussions and deliberations by the committee.
And the timeline for the budget will still come out of the audit committee to us. We won't be getting the accountability reports on a regular basis, but I'd like, we will get that budget timeline.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, councillor. Thank you for those. Councillor Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. I perhaps missed it. I see that there's a requirement for mayor and deputy mayor sit on this new committee, but is there a requirement for any additional councillors, and will that go to the nominating committee to decide?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, there'll be two other members of council and appointed by the nominating committee.
Thank you.
Anything further before we look at our recommendation? All right. It reads that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve consolidation of the audit committee and budget and finance committee into the audit and finance committee as described in the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three request for decision, moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Armstrong. Any further discussion on this item? Again, it's a recommendation to Committee of the Whole, so we will have another chance to chat about it at municipal council. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Livingston, for your presentation and your time this morning. Our next item on our agenda are three items of correspondence. We have before us a proposed service exchange letter to NSFM, which is the first one, and that's addressed to the president of NSFM currently, Mayor Brenda Chisholm-Beaton of Port Hawxbury. The second is the proposed service exchange letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Minister John Lawr. And so those would be outgoing. And the third item is regarding tick awareness, and that is incoming and is a sort of call to action from the Nova Scotia Public Health Department on advertising from our respective seats. Tick awareness, which we're all familiar with. So I would look to see if there are any questions perhaps for the mayor, as he's the author of the first two items of correspondence, or thoughts on those letters before we move to receive them. We're happy? Assume they've all been read and analyzed? Okay. With that, seeing no questions, I would look for a motion to receive the correspondence, moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Granger. Thank you. All in favor of the motion to receive the correspondence, please indicate in the usual fashion. Always check for ticks. And the motion carries unanimously. Just a question of procedure, will those, these letters penned by the mayor are not subject to coming to municipal council in October? They're good to go as of today? Is that correct, Mayor Matar? Can I ask you that?
In all fairness, they shouldn't have been indicated as proposed letters.
Okay.
They're sent.
They're sent? Well, I kind of, I did assume, but the word proposed threw me for a loop, so...
Yeah, I was a bit confused by that as well.
Okay, well, they've been sent, so I'm glad we didn't have any major objections around the table.
And for the benefit of council, I might say that a couple of softer ones had preceded them from other municipalities, and a couple of equally appointed ones had been sent by other municipalities subsequent to that. So there's probably five, I would say, that have been sent expressing the same concerns.
Yes, and of course, council had an opportunity to share our thoughts on the content of these letters prior to this meeting, so this did not come as a surprise to any of us today. Thanks, Mayor, for that clarification. Next is item ten, boarding committee reports. We have a written report from councillor Harding, who's not here to answer any questions, but if folks have any, feel free to reach out to him. Any other verbal reports at this time for any committees of council? Councillor Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to give a report on my attendance at the Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance as well. It was the Nova Scotia, how do they put it, Association of Police Chiefs. It was a combined conference, which I had the pleasure of attending as representative and chair in the, our Police Services Advisory Committee. The day really opened on September fourteenth. We had some open plenary sessions, as I mispronounced that word, with a presentation from, or opening talks from the deputy minister, where is her, Candace Thomas? And this was, there were some discussions around the federal funding on guns and gangs, the standards of policing following the Mass Casualty Commission, and a few other points. We also had greetings from the Minister of Justice, Brad Johns, and as well the mayor of Bridgewater and mayor of Lunenburg County. We then had a presentation from the CN Police on how they operate and some of their concerns and recommendations... and recommendations that they can pass forward to the public on trespassing and safety, followed by a presentation from the Executive Director of the Atlantic Police Academy on what they are doing to increase their class sizes so that they can ensure that there are more recruits available for the following year as police to be hired within the municipal police forces. We then had a presentation from Chief Gary Ford and Chief Deanna Hill of both the New Brunswick Police and the, Deanna being head of the RCMP for New Brunswick, speaking on integrated enforcement. And there was a very informative presentation from, surprisingly, an ATF agent who works within Canada, ATF standing for Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, they're a US agency, but their primary concern being the identification and serial number identification of firearms that may be seized in crime, and they gave a whole presentation on how you may do it, why you should do it, and encouraging those of the various law enforcement agencies and chiefs in attendance to participate in that program at very low cost, and it ensures that we don't have illegal firearms entering into our country. A couple other presentations I won't mention, and then we had a follow-up impromptu meeting of the Nova Scotia Association of Police Governance, discussing the future of the association, its composition, funding, and that there will be a meeting, an official meeting of the association at the NSFM, probably one of the evenings, they haven't yet decided. That's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions for the councillor on his report? Okay, any other reports to come before Committee of the Whole this morning? Okay, I see none, so I look for a motion to receive the reports. Moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Meisner. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Finally, looking to see if there's any other business to come before Committee of the Whole, recognizing we have special counsel just after this meeting. The motion carries for receiving the report. Mayor Matart, other business?
I just wanted to mention, to follow up on what you opened with concerning the death of former councillor Jodory, and point out that it's been the practice of the municipality as a show of respect and thanks for service and condolence with the family, that the municipality lowers flag to half mast until the funeral of the individual has been, has been held or to meet the, in this day and age, sometimes funerals are delayed or the family doesn't wish to hold a celebration of that nature, that we use our discretion as to when the flag goes back up to full mast. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Council Hurdle.
I should note that at the conclusion of my conference attendance in Lunenburg County, I had the pleasure to stop into the office for the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. This was impromptu. I just stopped in and was given a tour by the mayor, and we had a subsequent conversation about the contrasting differences of our municipalities, and I would encourage anyone around the table to, if you're in an adjacent municipality that you're not often in, to take the opportunity to speak with those who are our neighbors in the province or perhaps out of the province, and discuss some of those possible differences and improvements that we can make on our own municipality. There is one that stands out, and I will bring that to those around the table in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Good suggestion. Councillor Granger.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to remind people that on September 27th, the mayor and I will be hosting a community conversation in Canning at the Ross Creek Annex. The actual address is 2182 Sheffield Road, which is Highway 358. So hopefully you can all join us and converse with us and maybe have a coffee and a giggle.
Great. Thank you, councillor. I hope there's lots of giggling. Anything further for other business? Anything else anybody needs to bring up? We're going to do it all again in a minute, so thank you, council, for those items. Comments from the public? We do not have any members of the public with us today, so at this point, I'll look for a motion to adjourn, and we'll switch the system and move into special counsel before lunch. Motion to adjourn, councillor Granger and councillor Meisner. All in favor or otherwise, please signify now. We just have a brief delay while we wait for our systems to switch, and I'll wait till Chloe gives me the thumbs up. And we are adjourned unanimously. Just about unanimously. Looks like we're taking a momentary break, so we'll be back in five.[997.31]
Okay, we're gonna try, it's eleven forty. We're gonna try to get through as much of the special council as we can before lunch, and we'll see how we make out. There's some substantial items on here, so we will likely need to return after lunch, but let's make a good work of what we have in front of us. Okay, so, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the municipality of the County of Kings' Special Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're just following our Committee of the Whole meeting. For those who didn't join us for Committee of the Whole, I'll note that there are several councillors not present today, so, for various reasons, so we'll do our roll call and then look for a motion to excuse. At this moment in time, could you please indicate your presence by pointing it out on the roll call pad? We have six councillors in the room, including myself, well, five and a mayor. Councillors Granger, Meisner, Armstrong, Hurdle, and Mayor Matar and myself, Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz. Look now at this time for a motion to excuse councillor Killam, who is still on medical leave, and also councillors Allen, Davison, and Harding, who are attending the two thousand and twenty-three Atlantic Asset Management Conference in Moncton. Could I have a motion to excuse the four councillors? Moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Armstrong, or councillor Hurdle. I couldn't tell if you were moving or pointing. Okay, councillor Hurdle. All those in favor of excusing the absence, please indicate now on your pen pad. Okay, motion carries unanimously. We have an approved agenda in front of, or, we have an agenda in front of us that's about to be approved, hopefully. At this point, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated, moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Granger. Any discussion, additions, deletions, thoughts on the agenda in front of us? Seeing none, all in favor of the approval of the agenda, please indicate now. And the motion is carried unanimously, agenda is approved. With an approved agenda, I'd ask that any councillor disclose any conflict of interest issues they may have with any of the items on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item four, administration. We have the proclamation to Mi'kmaq History Month and Treaty Day, and I'd invite Grayson Parker, our diversity specialist, to come on up and present to us this morning, after quite a lengthy wait to come up here. Thanks for joining us this morning and welcome. Which, okay, up here.
Thank you all for having me this morning. It's been a while since I have seen all of your faces. In case you forgot mine, I am Grayson Parker, the diversity specialist, or one of two now. There is a friendly face behind me of our second diversity specialist, Teresa. So, as the deputy mayor said, I am here for a request for a decision on Mi'kmaq History Month and a Treaty Day proclamation. So, this request originates from the Strategy of Belonging and Policy COM dash zero-two-dash-zero-zero-three. The intent for this presentation is for municipal councils to approve the proclamation requests per the Proclamation's policy COM dash zero-two-dash-zero-zero-three. The municipality of the County of Kings is located in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral, current, and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. The Mi'kmaq nation stretches across the Atlantic provinces, the Gaspay region of Quebec, as well as parts of Maine. Mi'kmaq peoples have been present as stewards of this land for over eleven thousand years. The municipality is home to two First Nations communities, Gloskap First Nation and Annapolis Valley First Nation, as well as a large indigenous, a large urban indigenous population. The month of October is Mi'kmaq History Month, which has been celebrated in Nova Scotia since nineteen ninety-three. It was declared Mi'kmaq History Month by the Premier of Nova Scotia at the time, John Savage, and Mi'kmaq Grand Chief at the time, Ben Silleyboy. Two thousand and twenty-three marks the thirtieth anniversary. The purpose of this month is to continue educating and acknowledging the cultural heritage and history of the Mi'kmaq people in the province. Each year, a poster is created as a resource for teaching and helping audiences better understand significant aspects of Mi'kmaq life. In recognition of the thousands of athletes coming to Mi'kmaq to compete at the North American Indigenous Games hosted in Halifax, the theme for Mi'kmaq History Month two thousand and twenty-three is traditional games and sports. Mi'kmaq History Month begins with Treaty Day on October first. This day has been recognized across Nova Scotia since nineteen eighty-six by Grand Chief at the time, Donald Marshall, Senior. The purpose of Treaty Day is to commemorate the unique and special relationship that exists between the Mi'kmaq nation and the Crown, as well as promoting public awareness of the seventeen fifty-two Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Treaty Day serves as a reunion time for Mi'kmaq people and the wider community, as well as an opportunity to give thanks for those who signed the treaty. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship was intended to make peace, establishing what was to be an ongoing relationship between the Mi'kmaq people and the Crown, and to protect the land and the way of life for Mi'kmaq people. Through the Strategy of Belonging, and specifically the reconciliation Mi'kmaq Treaty Rights lends, the municipality is committed to relationship building with community, promoting the diversity of the region, supporting communities to tell their story, and supporting communities to tell their story. Proclaiming Treaty Day and Mi'kmaq History Month across the municipality of the County of Kings is one small step the municipality can take toward the goal of being a community of communities where all people belong, while taking the time to acknowledge and appreciate the cultural heritage, legacy, and contributions of the Mi'kmaq people across our community, while increasing awareness across the municipality and the province. There are no financial implications for this request. This request is lined up with the Strong Communities pillar, and especially the implementation of the Strategy for Belonging. For implementation, we will have a copy of the approved proclamation shared on the municipality's website, and a proclamation will be read at the proclamation event. For engagement, we will be having a proclamation event taking place during the month of October. Municipal council may choose not to proclaim October as Mi'kmaq History Month, or October first as Treaty Day, and the recommendation is that municipal council proclaim the month of October as Mi'kmaq History Month, and October first, two thousand and twenty-three, as Treaty Day in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Thank you very much. Any questions of our presenter this morning? I don't see any. Thank you so much for, well, highlighting the awareness of this issue, bringing it forward to us, explaining to us why it's important, and you've read the motion, so I would look for a member of council to move it. Moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Hurdle. Any discussion on the motion to proclaim October Mi'kmaq History Month and October first Treaty Day? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, and thank you to our new staff person. It's wonderful to have you with us this morning. We can't wait to hear from you next time on the podium. Okay, moving on to item five, financial services. We have Mr. Livingston back at the podium presenting on the Capital Investment Plan and Canada Community Building Fund allocation to villages, the report which we received, I believe, yesterday. So, we're looking forward to hearing from you, Mr. Livingston. And I'll note too, while we're waiting, we do have some in-camera agenda items. My hope is that we can deal with these two financial services items. Other business and comments are in the public before lunch, and then we'll go in-camera, have lunch, and then we will be coming out after in-camera for some public motions. That's the plan. Don't look so excited about it, everyone. There must be a bug going around. Everyone's a little subdued today. And there's only half of us, yeah. A good half, yeah. I was gonna say something earlier, but I didn't.
Thank you for bearing with me.
No worries. Welcome back.
Thank you. So, I'm here to talk about the Capital Investment Plan and CCBF allocations to our villages. So, first, get into the Capital Investment Plan. So, the Capital Investment Plan is a report to the province. It contains the capital budget for the municipality, including its five-year projection, along with the capital budgets of our seven villages and their five-year forecasts, including the sources of funding for all projects that are identified. In two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, the CIP contains one hundred and fifty-three projects planned across the municipality and the seven villages. All that detail is contained in Appendix B, which is the detailed CIP report. The funding sources that are identified for those projects include CCBF, and there'll be more CCBF discussion later in the slides, but first, just wanted to note that staff take the initial steps to evaluate the projects put forward by the villages to be included in the CIP, to make sure that they would be CCBF-eligible projects, and that process has been, once again, undertaken for this CIP. So, the first part of the Appendix B CIP document are all the projects planned over the entire five-year period, and the funding sources for that first year, two thousand and three, twenty-four. There's additional information on cumulative project spending for the last four to five years, and included in the two thousand and three, twenty-four component are the municipal budgeted projects of just over twenty-seven and a half million dollars, which would utilize a little over two-point-three million dollars' worth of CCBF, and that is consistent with the budget that we would have passed earlier this year. And then, the village projects totaling just under seven-point-seven million, with CCBF utilization of a little over two-point-seven million dollars. Parts two through five are those five, remaining four of the five-year capital projections. They detail the amounts to be spent over that period and the funding sources in each individual year, and then you can layer over top of the amounts that I just detailed on the previous slide, four-year capital projection for the municipality of a little over thirty-point-three million dollars of projects that would utilize just under seven-point-three million dollars of CCBF, and then village projects of just over nineteen-point-seven million dollars to utilize four million, seven, four-point-seven million dollars roughly of CCBF. So now, turning more into the CCBF specifics. The current CCBF, and if I didn't say it, the Canada Community Building Fund agreement expires at the end of March, two thousand and twenty-four. So, we'll have to await the continuation of that program, or what it, what it turns into, but the CIP is built under the presumption that the program would continue. For two thousand and three, twenty-four, under the existing agreement, the municipality would receive two million, three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars of CCBF for the year. Some of the requirements that the municipality has to follow with the province is to file a few different reports throughout the course of the year, a pre-construction report, an annual expenditure report, and then the five-year CIP, which we're discussing today. There's communications protocol that must be followed, and then the requirement to display CCBF signage for projects that are over a certain dollar threshold. So, the villages play into the CCBF picture through a approved method or formula of allocating CCBFs from the municipality through to the seven villages. The allocation method is based on proportionate shares of water and wastewater infrastructure for four villages that have that infrastructure, and the remaining three villages apply on a project-by-project basis for an allotment of CCBF that would have otherwise been retained by the municipality. The allocation to the villages with infrastructure and have a calculated annual allotment are detailed on the slides now. The far-right column is the annual allocation, and you can see totaling the roughly two-point-three million dollars of CCBF for two thousand and three, twenty-four. So, as I already got into, the four villages with infrastructure get a calculated allocation; three apply project-by-project. We'll talk first about allocated villages. They have the ability to reserve or save up any unspent allocated CCBF, so that they can undertake larger-scale infrastructure projects in the future. So, each annual allotment is set aside for them, and it accumulates until it's utilized. So, the village of Duminas is one such village. In two thousand and three, twenty-four, the full details of their projects are contained in that Appendix B, but they have included sidewalk projects, their water meter program, some park upgrades, and some projects for water and wastewater infrastructure and equipment. Port Williams has a single project for park upgrades. The village of Kingston has some water and wastewater infrastructure and equipment planned, sidewalk project, and some trail upgrades. And Canning is looking at a sidewalk project and a water infrastructure project. So, then, the non-allocated villages. The, the carry-forward situation for non-allocated villages is on a project-by-project basis, so unlike the calculated villages, they do not receive an annual expected amount, and has to be based on what has been approved by the municipality. All three of the non-allocated villages have an application in for two thousand and three, twenty-four, and we'll go through those now, starting with Aylesford. There's a sidewalk project on Pine Ave for a total budgeted cost of one hundred, one-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, and that is looking to utilize CCBF of seventy thousand dollars. And a parking lot project next to some park facilities for an estimated cost of seventy-five-thousand dollars with CCBF funding requested of fifty thousand dollars. The sidewalk project is a carryover project with slight cost increase estimated, so the request for CCBF previously approved was for sixty thousand dollars, so the request is for an incremental ten thousand dollars on that project, and the parking lot project is new, and the village is requesting the full fifty thousand dollars be approved. The village of Cormola Square has a project for four bus shelters with a total cost of sixty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, requesting CCBF of forty-four thousand, ninety-three dollars. There's a firefighting training tower, which was, is just, is a carryover project with a total budgeted cost now of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, with a CCBF request of one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. There's just a very slight increase in the CCBF request here for a minor increase in estimated project cost, and I just wanted to also note that in the prior period, there has already been a claim of sixty, roughly sixty-one thousand dollars against that total one-ninety-six of CCBF. And then, there is a water storage building addition with a budgeted cost of one-hundred-and-eighty-seven, three-hundred dollars, and CCBF request of one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars on that particular project. Third and final non-allocated village is Greenwood, and they have a sidewalk on Rocknotch Road with a increased budgeted cost of three-hundred thousand dollars and a CCBF request of two-hundred-thousand dollars. This is another carryover project with an increased cost estimate, and the incremental CCBF request is roughly seven, seventy thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. So, some financial implications, in particular, related to the village applications that do not receive an allocation of CCBF, is that a total of six-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars for fiscal two thousand and three, twenty-four has been requested and includes a little over three-hundred thousand dollars of new approvals of CCBF. And there are some specifics by village, so the request for sixty thousand by Aylesford, Cormola Square, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, and Greenwood, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. The Appendix A to the RFD, it contains a reconciliation of our CCBF, the opening balances, the allotment for each fiscal period, and then spending by each of the individual jurisdictions, and then a forecasted closing balance and a reconciliation to our general ledger account balances. So, with the implementation, we are looking for approval of the CIP, so that it can be filed with the province in accordance with our requirements under the CCBF program, and throughout the year, as villages undertake their projects, they will submit claims for payments of CCBF. So, the two recommendations would be that municipal council approve the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Canada Community Building Fund allocations and use for village projects as detailed in, that should be Appendix B of the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three request for decision, and that municipal council approve, sorry, no, Appendix A was correct, and that municipal council approve the two thousand and three, twenty-four five-year capital investment plan as detailed in Appendix B of the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three request for decision, and I'll gladly take any and all questions you have on the matter.
Any questions? We're all several years into this process, so I think we're all pretty familiar with how it works and, and where this capital money does tend to flow. Any, any questions at all? Okay, looking for the first motion regarding Appendix A, so approving the two thousand and three, twenty-four Canada Community Building Fund allocations and use for village projects as detailed in Appendix A of the agenda package, moved by councillor Hurdle, seconded by Mayor Matar. Discussion on the first motion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And after the next motion, we'll break for lunch. Sorry that you have to come back, Mr. Livingston. The motion carries unanimously, and the second motion regarding the second appendix, that municipal council approve the two thousand and three, twenty-four five-year capital investment plan as detailed in Appendix B of the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three request for decision, moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Granger. Discussion on this motion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I think at this point, we will recess for lunch and come back at twelve forty. So, we'll see you at twelve forty-five. So we'll see you at twelve forty-five.
Well, a couple of minutes late, but we're back. For those of you just tuning in, Chloe, am I good to go? Sorry, I gave you no heads up at all that I was about to begin. We are back to Tuesday, September 19th, Special Account.
Couple of minutes late, but we're back. For those of you just tuning in, Chloe, am I good to go? Sorry, I didn't, I gave you no heads up at all that I was about to begin. We are back to Tuesday, September 19th, Special Counsel. We have just approved two motions under item 5A, and we're moving to 5B, loan approval for the King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre. Mr. Livingston is back once more. Welcome again.
Perfect, thanks. Yeah, so loan approval for King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre. Quick overview, the KRC is looking to construct two four-bedroom small option homes. Funding is to be provided by the Nova Scotia Department of Community Services, and mortgage financing provided by Housing Nova Scotia. The municipality doesn't make financial contributions, but according to the King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre Act, we are required to consent to their borrowing. Some details on the homes is that they will be each located in Middleton at 13/14 and 18/19 Sunset Crescent. And mortgage financing for construction of the homes respectively will be $974,607 and $971,632. The municipality's role, as I mentioned, legislation requires the municipality to consent to the borrowing and states that the municipality may provide a guarantee. The former Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corporation policy would have been, would have required the municipality to provide a guarantee had they been the body providing financing. We're not quite sure on the policy of the Division of Treasury Board that is now taking over that municipal finance role. But presumably it is similar, but beside the case because financing is coming from Housing Nova Scotia. And back in 2021, the municipality provided a similar consent to KRC, and at that time did not provide a guarantee for the borrowing. Financial implications, there are none, except in the event that the King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre ceases operations. And in that case, according to the Act, the municipality would assume all liabilities of the organization. So ultimately, the recommendation would be that municipal council provide consent for mortgage financing of the King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre in the amount of $1,946,239 from Housing Nova Scotia for the construction of two modular four-bedroom small option homes. I'll take any questions you have on the matter.
Any questions, Mayor Matart, and then Counselor Granger?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. What's the source of the revenue with which to repay the mortgage?
So through you, Deputy Mayor, to the mayor. It's not 100% clear, but it seems as though the Department of Community Services will provide all the funding needed to cover the mortgage costs.
So the government gives them the mortgage, and then the government pays it back?
That's my take on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong?
Well, that was my question. So why, why is rehab in there at all? Why isn't this worked out between the two divisions of the government?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I'm not certain of the answer to that question. This is something that the rehab has done in the past, as far as I know, and consistent with the recommendation that came forward in 2021. I don't know the current status of those projects, but presumably the homes would be operated by the Rehabilitation Centre, and their, their people would be occupying the residences, although, once again, I'm not certain of the exact circumstances at play.
Yeah, I'm just not sure why we're getting dragged into this. But anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you. I should note, I sit on the Board of the Rehab, although, as part of my council obligations, although I did not have the fortune to be there at the time of this discussion. So I ask, where do they come up with this $970-plus thousand? Has it gone through procurement, or is this just a hopeful price tag? It's awfully precise, down to the dollar, so...
Yeah, the, through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Hurdle. There are agreements contained in Appendix A of the RFD that discuss the figures. Beyond sort of that disclosure, I'm not precisely aware of what makes up those figures.
Any follow-up, Counselor?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I have no more lights. Are we comfortable proceeding with the motion? At this point, I'd look for a mover. Moved by Mayor Matart. Can I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Granger. Discussion on the motion. Mayor Matart?
The only reason I move the motion is is because there's an apparent requirement under the legislation for us to consent. And all we're doing is consenting. We're not guaranteeing the repayment of the mortgage, so... I wouldn't hesitate, I wouldn't want to withhold consent and block their plans, but I do hope that we will, in time, before I pass away, extract ourselves from this organization.
Counselor Hurdle? Oh, sorry. No.
And, you know, I'm a little bit facetious, but there's no reason for us to be there. We're, we serve no useful purpose in being there, and the legislation is simply what draws us into the organization. But we, we don't fund it. We, we don't guarantee its debts. We, we remain by legislation responsible for its debts that it folds. And I'd be really interested to see what happened, if it really did fold. But it's, it's fully funded by the, by the government, and as has been said, there's no reason for us to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle. Sorry about that. I was trying to get your light to turn green, but I don't think I can from here. So anyway, go ahead.
That's okay. I'm, I have to wear two hats. I'm taking off my board hat for the KRC. I'm looking at this as a counselor and as somebody who pays taxes. And $970,000 for a home, understandably, it has to be equipped. Accessibility required. I still can't see how they're getting that figure for the cost of, the price of a home that's awfully huge. And then to double that up? I can't, I can't come to that understanding in my head how the material cost and construction cost is going to equal that price tag. I understand the legislative requirement, but I, I still, I can't, I can't vote in favor of backing this. This seems like an inflated cost. I'm not in favor of this direction of movement. There's empty beds at the KRC right now, and this provides eight extra beds, just moved into the community. I understand the rationale behind the report that recommends this, but the cost is tremendous, so absolutely I cannot support this. Thank you.
Counselor Armstrong?
I, I think I've already said that, you know, I'm still not understanding why we are still involved with the KRC, but I do understand that there are things going on in the background that may change that someday. That being said, I understand Counselor Hurdle's trepidation about the prices of these particular units. When I was on the Board at KRC, there was a movement afoot by the government at the time to move all residents of places like KRC into small option home, into community, to make them part of their landscape, part of their neighborhoods. And this is just another way of doing that. You know, we're not talking about ordinary homes here. We're talking about four-bedroom homes that may have to have hallways that are big enough for wheelchairs, and, you know, fully accessible bathrooms, and all of that other stuff. And yes, I, I understand, you know, $900,000 for a four-bedroom home, but at our last council meeting, we awarded a contract for $1.5 million for 600 feet, 600 meters of sidewalk. So I'm not sure that we can really start talking about dollars and cents in this particular instance. So if this gives an opportunity for eight people to move into community and become, you know, members of, of the town of Middleton, and then I'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from counsel? It's been moved and seconded. Mayor Matart?
Well, I just wanted to be on the record of endorsing Counselor Armstrong's comments. This is about the people, not necessarily the price. And we weren't, one of the difficulties is that we were not really engaged in arriving at the price or justifying the price. But again, neither are we guaranteeing the price, so I will be voting in favor.
Thank you. That's a good clarification. Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, and it's against my own personal better interest to continue to speak on this, but I will anyway. I, I understand that there is that need to move into the community and become part of the community, but under, having an address based in a community doesn't necessarily make somebody part of the community. And I, I know that that is oftentimes, even though the residents are in small option homes, they are still very bound to the, the walls or the four walls of the, the home in which they reside. So the good feelings of existing and living in a community such as Middleton may be there, but in reality, they're still present and not really getting owed into the community in, in any greater capacity than they would if they were to occupy those eight beds within the KRC in Waterville. So again, I'm speaking against this, and I implore those colleagues around the table to also vote against this.
Thanks, Counselor. I would just remind everybody that we're voting on just the consent for the mortgage, and that's not really related to the entire philosophy of, of care, but rather our legislative requirement in terms of providing consent for the mortgage financing. So that's, that's the topic at hand, and that's what we should be talking about. Counselor Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would prefer to see a disentanglement happen before we make this decision. Yeah, I, I don't feel that I will be voting in favor of this, although I do agree with Counselor Armstrong. Having people in the community, as part of the community, is a very strong thing. But I also agree with Counselor Hurdle, the amount of money. And I do understand that there will be things that need to be put into these homes to make them more accessible, that are more expensive. My biggest fear is that this cost is a now cost, and it may not be the actual cost when we're done, just because of increases of, you know, labor or materials, that kind of thing. So I'm not voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hurdle, I'll come back to you. But again, I just want to remind folks, we're talking about this. We're not guaranteeing this amount of money. It's, it's simply providing consent via our legislation, and we wouldn't be in this position if we had disentanglements. So we would, anyway, that's, it's cart before the horse. We're, we're here where we are, and this is a box they need to check to move forward, in my understanding. Counselor Hurdle for a second time on the motion?
A third time, but I, I'd like to make a motion to table. Four counselors aren't present. This seems to be a somewhat, more so than often, contentious recommendation. And there is the acknowledgement that we are in the process of disentangling. So given those arguments, I move we table this for six months.
I don't think that's, I mean, you can motion to table, but I think six months is an unreasonable timeframe. We have to provide a response to the rehab. So you, I think you can move, move to table to the next month's meeting, but I don't think a motion, we don't have enough information regarding the impacts of that timeframe to allow it. So I would allow a motion to table, which is non-debatable at this time, but only till the next meeting.
That's fair.
Okay. Motion to table until the October meeting of council is on the floor. It's not debatable. Wait till it's on the screen, and then I would ask you vote. Unless I've made some...
Is there a secondary?
Oh, no, there's not. Does it have a secondary for the motion to table? Good catch, Mayor. The motion to table fails for want of a secondary. Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, first of all, my apologies for, for getting off topic. You, you are correct in, in chiding us that this is strictly, for lack of a better term, a rubber stamp that we're required to give based on the legislation that makes up King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre. And so I, I think we should just move forward and get the, get the stamp done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, just reminding everyone of the recommendation. The municipal council provide consent for mortgage financing of the King's Regional Rehabilitation Centre in the amount of $1,946,239, sorry, $1,946,239 from Housing Nova Scotia for the construction of two modular four-bedroom small options homes. Please vote now. The motion carries with one negative vote. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Livingston. Item six, other business. Is there any other business to come before the meeting, before we move to a closed session? Seeing none, there is no public in attendance, so we will address that item. And I would look for a motion to move into closed session, after which we will be moving out into public session again with, to deal with some of those matters. Moved by Mayor Matart, seconded by Counselor Meisner. Thank you. Discussion on the motion. All in favor or otherwise, please signify now. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Just give me the thumbs up when we're offline. Aha. Thank you, Chloe. Ms. Postle? Ms. Postle?
I know that...
You're the floor.[582.88]
Until we're back online? Where's my write? Thank you very much Chloe. Welcome back. We have returned from our in-camera session and we have one motion to deal with which I will now read into the record. That Municipal Council authorized the Chief Administrative Officer under Section 11.1 Subsection A and B of FIN-05-006 Procurement Policy to enter into an agreement with Tumi Transformations Inc. to provide the services for Phase II of the Document Organization Structure Project, SharePoint Site Construction and Records Migration in the amount of $78,740, including non-recoverable HST, to be funded from the General Operating Reserve 61-4-460-270. To the mover of the motion, moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Hurdle. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please indicate in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Council. And that concludes the bulk of our, well, the entirety of our agenda today. Thank you all. We were a small but mighty group today, which meant we all had to do a little more heavy lifting than normal. So I appreciate all of your input. And of course, always staff, thank you so much for your hard work and everything you do. I look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. All in favor, please signify now. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much.